Because Ray is not going. Jenna?
Oh, yeah. Renee already confirmed that.
Well, she confirmed it before I could find out if we had enough tickets.
Oh, gotcha.
So. All right, let's, uh, we got everybody here, right?
Uh, we just, oh, no.
Members.
Yep, she's, yep. I think so, yes, sir.
Let's get fired up then, if we could. Are the state folks here? Okay, good. We're gonna change the agenda a little bit for your sake, so that you guys aren't stuck here and through all our mundane stuff. So, uh, first thing we do is, Mr. City Attorney. I'd like to deliver the oath to you, sir, if I may. Go follow along here. I'll have you repeat after me and raise your right hand, sir. I, Eric K. Nelson.
I, Eric K. Nelson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And I have not knowingly violated any law related to my appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Or caused it to be done by others, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Very good, sir. Welcome. I think one of them's for, for him, right?
I think it was.
Oh, okay. Very good. Okay, the ball drops now, buddy, so.
There it goes.
Offside, it's over with.
That's right, it's efficient.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we give, sit us on the floor, please. And, uh, we are going to change our order just to, uh, to appease these, uh, state fellows, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah, heck, yeah.
So the first thing we're gonna do is the CY and Poplar intersection, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everybody. We, um, had to request a number of weeks ago to see if we couldn't entice members of the YDOT engineering team to come and visit with us about, uh, some concerns that Council had identified with regard to the intersection at CY and Poplar. More specifically, the southern half, if you will, of that intersection as it moves down South Poplar, past Walgreens and, and the I place and so on. So, uh, Andrew helped us by reaching out with, uh, our YDOT contacts and so on, and it sounds like the mayor may have had some conversations as well, and, and low and behold, we are lucky to have some of our YDOT friends here tonight to, uh, walk us through the configuration of that intersection and, and, uh, take our feedback and entertain any questions, Mr. Mayor, and so with that, I'd be happy to defer to Mark and his team.
Sure.
You guys have the handle.
You are Mr. Nina?
Joel Mina.
I'm Bruce Nelson, nice to meet you. I'm the one that contacted you, I believe you're in Cheyenne, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm the one that, uh, we had a phone conversation over this, so.
And Mayor, Council, if anybody wants hard copies of his, um, PDF, I've got them, or it was certainly in the packet as well, so.
I'd like that, Andy.
Anybody like a hard copy?
I would, please.
Want me to stand over there or up front?
Uh, probably up front, if it's okay with you.
Keep back.
Anybody else like a copy?
Thank you.
It's kinda hard to follow along if you don't have a copy. And we're not gonna do it powerfully.
Good, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you for the invitation to speak to you. I'm Joel Mina, I'm the state traffic engineer at YDOT. Out of Cheyenne, at headquarters. Also here from YDOT is Mark A. M., the district engineer for this area, and the local traffic engineer, Brooke Allen. I'm here to, specifically to talk to you about the intersection, CY and Poplar, state highway. That maintains the traffic signal there. And some of the concerns that were brought up a couple months ago by the, at that time, you, I don't believe you were the mayor.
I was the vice mayor at the time.
Vice mayor, okay. So, quick agenda, just, I wanna look at the overview of the issue. Got a little aerial on there that, uh, kinda shows you where the problem spot that was identified. And go through the crash data, how that traffic signal operates, 'cause it's very unique in our state, how that one operates. Changes made since we rebuilt it. Imagine you all remember the rebuild down there, it was painful. And then some observations about things that are looking well, some not so well. And then what path forward would be. So that's just a quick dirty, I got about 20 minutes, tops. Okay. So, the intersection of CY and Poplar, uh, very busy intersection. Insignalized, it is on a skew. The average daily traffic is real high on that stretch of our highway. It's between 20 and 26,000 vehicles a day. You're all familiar with the dual left as you're on CY to turn north on Poplar. The laneage is, oh, they're not pretty straightforward. There's no free right turns. But I do want to mention that the skew is an issue. The issue that was identified, shown in the diagram on the bottom, was a merge problem heading southbound towards the mountain. So if you're on the, you're at the traffic signal on the north leg heading south predominantly in the PMP, anywhere between, say, 250 and 540, uh, probably more around the 5 o'clock time. That leg stacks up. Most folks don't wanna use the rightmost lane because of the merge downstream at the Walgreens approach, and it becomes either a drag race or a test of wills, or what bigger cities, uh, like Minneapolis and folks is, they call that a zipper merge, where they have a, where Jackson Hole wants zipper merges, they have a lot of traffic when you take turns and, anyways, that's probably part of the, part of the issue. Of course, I live in Cheyenne, but I've worked on this traffic signal a long time ago when I was a signal technician, so I'm very familiar with it. Okay, so, uh, flip over here. Crash data was, what really was focused, 'cause you mentioned to me on the phone that we got a crash problem. And, and, you know, when you look at the crash data at the intersection, yeah, there are a lot of crashes there, no denying that. Uh, the last six years of crash data, 104 total crashes. I did six years, so, so we get before the COVID and then post-COVID, a little bit during COVID, 'cause things around the country were weird. Traffic volumes dropped and then they went back up, and things have been happening during COVID that's not normal. Normally, I'll do three or five years, but we did six. So, of the 104 crashes that happened at this intersection and beyond the limits, uh, 18 were injuries, but nobody died, zero fatals. Uh, with, of that, the breakdown, you got 40 rear-end crashes. Traffic signals create crashes, mostly rear-enders. 42 were angle crashes. On the PowerPoint, that's red, 'cause that shouldn't be happening. We put signals in to eliminate or get it as lower as we can, angle crashes, probably the most injurious crash. Now, you had 10 side swipes, seven head-ons, and five other. Seven head-ons, another anomaly of traffic signals, you, something different about that. Only two crashes happened near the Walgreens approach on South Poplar. There were no injuries in those two crashes. So of the 104 that happened, we only could find two in our crash records. So, that might address part of your issue, but not all.
It could, but I want you to be aware also that I've witnessed over a dozen just in the last year at that particular spot. So not all of these are being reported, not all of them are, uh.
Absolutely.
You know, they'll pull into Walgreens, they'll exchange insurance information, and off they go. So there's a lot of these that aren't being reported, just so you know. The traffic is so heavy at that time, I don't think they wanna tie up the entire intersection waiting on police, so.
Yeah, there's no way to track things that don't get reported.
I took video on my phone for you, um, but I'm not gonna show it to you, because then my phone becomes public property, so we, I can't do that. But I can explain it to you as we go along, exactly what I'm seeing.
Sure. It's really the same problem at every work zone, where we're busy on the interstate, we shut a lane, take I-80, the trucks don't let you in.
Right.
We shut the leftmost lane, all the cars have to figure a way to get around the trucks, and when you start getting congested, bad things happen. But for comparison, I thought I would take two other similar signals on the same corner, on the same highway. First in Poplar, one that we're gonna rebuild here shortly. There were 70 crashes at that intersection, compare that to 104 at CY and Poplar, 13 injuries, but one fatal. And then downstream to the west, CY and Wyoming Boulevard, another large intersection, dual lefts, lots of traffic volume, there were 82 crashes at that intersection. Similar type traffic volumes, 27 injuries and no fatals, so. Is it in the, yeah, it is, is it high? Absolutely. Does it have some anomalies? 42 angle crashes, seven head-ons, that's a red flag to me. Probably speaks to the skew, the dual left. Sorry?
Sir?
Just to, I just wanna clarify and make sure I'm understanding. So when you say the, an angle crash, you're talking about like a T-bone?
Typically a right angle. Somebody ran the red light.
Yeah.
And you were on the green and somebody ran it, which was, is very common.
Okay. And then just the other clarification is, um, this is all crash data for that intersection, not just the merging part, correct?
It would be in advance, uh, well past in that 400, 500 foot range. So it wouldn't encompass all the way to 13th, but it would take into account the crashes that would happen at 15th, that kinda channelized goofy thing coming out of Albertson's?
Yes, yes.
It would encompass that.
Okay.
Nothing in the parking lot.
As well as the merge on the south side?
Yes, yeah, that's what we try to focus.
What I wanna clarify is, it's just not a merge crashes, it's crashes in the intersection, intersection itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Combined, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Just, just by contrast, uh, same time period of signal, a two-lane roundabout in Cheyenne had 200 crashes. Same time period, 200 crashes, so the 104 here, sounds like a lot, but intersection crashes at a two-lane round, now there was a lot less injuries. Just to give you some context. So the signal operation, and I won't worry with all the details, but it is actuated in all eight, so it really is as efficient as we can make it. It's not pre-time like your downtown signals, goes through 20 seconds, you know, it's looking for cars and it extends the green based on vehicles. It's coordinated, which means on either side of it, there's signals that we try to progress traffic up and down the highway, try. It's a little hit and miss, it's not a perfect science. So that has to define the overall cycle length, from start all the way around to start again. And that is 90 seconds, pretty long. I mean, some of the longest that we see in Wyoming. Jackson's the only one beating you, but that's because of capacity problems. And that's in the PMP, so by time of day, it changes. There's eight phases with the right turn overlap, and you probably all know, as you're heading southbound, there'll be a green arrow that says go right. Most people don't see it, but when the dual left, green arrows are on, those are safe movements to make. No pedestrians can go. Four pedestrian phases, they're all push-button activated. The dual left on CY to northbound Poplar operates protected permissive with the flashing yellow arrow. That is pretty unique to this part of the country. Protected meaning it's a green arrow, permissive means you can make your dual left under the flashing yellow arrow. And it does lag, so it doesn't come up before the through, it comes up typically after the through with the green arrow. That's pretty common around the state. There's a little issue with that dual left during the PMP. You probably noticed we have red arrows. We identified there's no gaps, why bring a flashing yellow arrow? It's the only one in the state that we're operating that way on the state system, and we're looking to expand it. During the PMP, the signal operates at a pretty poor level of service, level of service D. Everybody that approaches there, if you averaged them all up over the P, it's an average of 45 seconds awake. That's a level of service D. E is at capacity, F you fail. And, and you see it on the southbound leg during the PMP, during weekdays, around the 5 o'clock, it's failing. People are waiting a lot longer. Okay? The off-peak delays are really well, or they operate well, the detection's working real well, B, C ratio, that's very, very good. Other worse leg, southbound Poplar, turn movement during the PMP gets operating at and sometimes over capacity. I consider that broke in Wyoming. That's broke. There's places in Wyoming where we can't fix it 'cause of right-of-way, this might be one of them, we can't add more lanes. There may be some laneage we can add, and I'll get to that. Again, the AADT, the average annual daily traffic, so there's days it's a lot higher than 26,000. This is the average over 365 days. There's probably days out there it's 30,000 plus. The last turning movement counts on our end was five years ago, that's old. We gotta do something about that. The changes that we've made since the last rebuild, I'm better to tell you what slide I'm on here. Slide, uh, five. We did the prohibition of the flashing yellow arrow during the PMP, and I believe that's from 250 to 540. We did the time-of-day protection-only mode, so you're only gonna get a red arrow as you're on the dual left, and you're gonna have to wait for a green arrow, no flashing yellow arrow. We did something, uh, unique on the crosswalk that's on the north leg of Poplar. Uh, if there's a pedestrian that pushes the button, that flashing yellow arrow will not come up, because it's just one of those things on a dual left. Those folks are looking to stay in their lane and make the, make the movement, and they're not looking for a pedestrian. We have started to look at other locations in the state where, where having pedestrian issues. As you know before our legislature, right now, that is a huge topic. Uh, we've, uh, put in fault monitoring for outages, failures, and even detection 24/7, so our technicians, her, works technicians are notified every time that signal burps, which means we don't have to wait for a phone call to tell us our stuff's broke. Uh, we've added a pan-zoom tilt camera for remote monitoring, so after I got talk, while I was talking to you, I looked at that camera, I can pan-zoom tilt, I can look at every approach. None of that's saved, it's for operational purposes only, but I can verify, yeah, we got a problem. We got more than that, we got a lot of problems there, but I'll get to that. Slide six. These are some observations that I've made, and I've been doing this about 38 years statewide. The PMP delays and stacking is, uh, primarily due to lane utilization, the inside lane, 90% of the traffic will take it. Only 10% take the rightmost lane or the outside lane. A lot of times, those are folks that came out of Albertson's and got stuck, and they couldn't get over. So they have to figure a way to migrate. Probably telling you something you already know, but being an out-of-towner, I, I thought, I saw that and I thought, wow, that's not an aggressive driver. Hang on. Tons of red light running, which I know we have probably a city police here, and telling him nothing new, but we have this at all busy intersections, large intersections. Uh, the proximity and control of the 15th Street intersection, a little bit of channel is, uh, that, it doesn't work. People are just doing what they want. It's really problematic in the PMP when folks hitting southbound on Poplar, allow them people to come out and make a right, trying to be nice and courteous, but behind them, the traffic stacked up past 13th. Uh, U-turns, I, I've noticed, and that's probably due to some of the turn restrictions we levied on Walgreens, they'll go up to the traffic signal, make a U to head back west. That does show up a little bit in the crash data. The skew angle, skew means it's like an X, it's not a plus sign. Anytime you do that, you got problems. That's why we try to build right-angle intersections, never skews. Skews increase, sometimes turning movements in the intersection increases speeds and makes some sight problem issues. Identified possibly a blind spot for the westbound left turners, that's a single left turn heading back to the west on CY. Uh, it's depending on if that dual left turn posing you is stacking up, and what type of vehicles are there. I noticed it, 'cause we had a detection problem there during the school hours two years ago, and I sat out there and, oh, holy crap.
Well, that intersection is also where we have some of the angle crashes at, that you're not considering when they're, when they're going north on Poplar. There's only one left turn lane, if you're following me.
I am.
And so the main lane of traffic coming, if there's a car in that right lane that goes to nowhere, and he's speeding to beat the light, that's when he'll hit, they'll hit, I've seen a couple crashes there.
Sure.
Where they couldn't see him, because they were hidden by the other people that were turning left and it got them, so that's, there are some angle crashes that are happening there because of our lane that literally goes nowhere.
Right. I wouldn't, I wouldn't doubt that. The, the crashes I had to focus on were in that proximity of the transition.
Sure.
But I saw a lot of acceleration contests happening and with vehicles.
Every night, you can see it every night.
Towing a trailer.
You can see it every night.
You know, man. Okay, uh, the dual left tracking and speeds. We, we have this problem everywhere, dual left, people, keeping people in their lanes as they make a dual left. In Cheyenne, Jackson, like Rock Springs, you'll see a lot of side swipe crashes, because they just start not paying attention to where their, what their, where their destination is. So that's a pretty common problem. Uh, but I did notice, on a good note, I have one good note, there's very little truck traffic there, I think y'all know why. I won't go there. Uh, last slide, uh, seven, uh, I, I identified a few paths forward from our end, but I, I think some can be done right away, some are already in the plan. Restriping, especially getting that skip dash through the intersection to eliminate that, am I in my lane as I'm making my dual left or not? Really hard to keep those markings, like crosswalk markings, really hard, 'cause the tires chew them up. Brooke is gonna be on that this summer with a better marking, methyl methacryate possibly, and try to put a little more attention to those, like down there at Wyoming Boulevard on the other side of town. Now, that's Evansville, so you don't care about that. Not true? Is that still Casper?
That's Casper.
Oh, I'm from Cheyenne, I'm sorry.
But if it was Evansville, we wouldn't care, I'm kidding.
That's right.
I'm kidding.
Evansville on the other side, that's right.
I'm kidding, I probably should.
We're gonna recount.
You're gonna give me a buck.
All the signals, and then we're gonna re-time them, which means, you know, allocating green time a little bit different, especially by time of day. But since we're, our counts are all of them five years old, that's, that's garbage. That, that's a minor tweak, but it happens every day, every time that signal's operating. It adds up to be something big, and that's already scheduled for this summer, or 2023. I think we've gotta come up with a way to improve the southbound Poplar lane utilization for the outside through lane. And, you know, just a Google Earth image and just, but I don't see why it stops at the Walgreens approach, but that it's your street, I can't do anything about that. But allocating more green time for that southbound movement because of the poor lane, it's not gonna happen. That can't happen. We will have stacking storage problems on CY. Right?
Say again?
We will have stacking problems on CY if we cut the green time on CY and allocate it to southbound, because the lane utilization, which is 90/10, we gotta get that closer to 50/50 or 60/40 to better utilize your street, South Poplar from CY South, to get all them people to their homes, 'cause that's where it looks to me like they're going.
Correct.
So that's kind of a joint issue. Looks like a restriping thing to me, but, I mean, that's up for your engineering.
When you say that, are you thinking that that should be two-lane all the way through?
Not all the way through, but just.
Or 25th or something?
If you went down another couple blocks, giving people more time to merge.
Well, at least it wouldn't be merging in the intersection then.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
That would certainly be better. Or, what would happen if we just did away with that right lane period and made, when you're going south, and turned that into a two-way right turn lane, so semis can turn that corner easier without hitting the, uh, posts anyway? What if we just did away with that lane in front of Walgreens?
Well, you, you run into the same problem with the, the cycle time. The split for that movement isn't going to increase much. The only way to get more throughput southbound, that's your problem, is to get two lanes that function well. But a dual right does not help the highway at all. I, I've looked at that level of service, I have it with me, but a dual right there doesn't help us at all. And I know you guys have two dual rights off our system, you're the only place in the state that has dual rights.
I'm not saying it would work. I was just looking for a way to get rid of that extra lane and stop this madness in that intersection when people are heading south. So either we do extend that, make the two lanes further and take some of the right-of-way, you know, the sidewalks out and, and widen that street there, like you're saying.
I don't think you need to widen. I think you've got enough room.
You think there's enough room there?
I think you've got enough room. I'm doing Google Earth only, and I'm a, I'm an electrical engineer, so I gotta stay in my lane. That's what the boss always tells me, after a dang year, 40 years, I ain't staying in my lane. My job's to improve things. But to, from my, from a traffic engineering perspective, that looks like the best improvement the city could make. That's from my years of experience.
And, and I think I'm hearing you say, then, essentially extend that pseudo-lane into a full lane further south to, like you said, maybe 25th or something like that? So that you have two operating lanes going further south?
Sure.
That's what you're proposing?
What, that's?
Oh, no, I'm not proposing that. That, to me, looks like the path forward that could be done, like when we're out there timing our traffic signal and recounting, short-term improvement. That could be done.
And we would have another, in a sense, we'd have another 12th, 13th Street, very narrow, two-lane through there.
Mayor, though, I, uh, then it's not one-way?
Right.
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 Yeah, we need to take a look at the right-of-way width, it may require some Boulevard taking, and I, I just don't know, tell me.
I got just two more, one more item really, and then I'm done and get out of your hair. This area, this corridor, really looks like we should conduct a comprehensive safety-type operational study. And if, you know, right now, we're not in a place where, I'm down eight people in my office. I'm not in a place to put a traffic engineer on it, but we could get a consultant to come in and do that, and take all the concerns, and take the public's concerns, on things that we don't see. You know, our, our job is to move that traffic up and down our highways, right? Our primary focus is always on high-speed roads, where people do die. That's where we spend a lot of our time, and that's where we should, on those interstates and two-lane roads. We've raised those speed limits up to the point where it's quite a task. I mean, keeping people safe at 75, 80-plus miles an hour, that's, that's our focus. So the urban stuff, it's not that we're trying to diss it, but I do think this problem probably remedied best by some of the short-term things we're going to do, but I think my recommendation, and that's what I made to Mark back here, the local district engineer could tell me to pound sand, is to add a lane, far back as you can, but, you know, I would think another 500 feet would give people enough room to make a merge. Right?
Lisa?
So for this crash data, did you have a chance to just see what the difference was, if there were more wrecks, say, in the summertime versus the wintertime?
I did not. I didn't do it seasonally, but it's easy to, to do, it's, it's.
Just because I do know 100% that going west on that road, um, going home at, at 5 o'clock, you're completely blinded, all the way out to Paradise Valley. So, so I think that that might be part of your angle crashes, is because if you've got somebody running a red light or a yellow light, and somebody can't even see the lights, and they think that it's green, they're going, you, it's hard to see vehicles, you can't see the lights, it's just nothing. So I was just curious of how many of these were actually summertime?
It'd be easy to take that, put it in Excel, and just spit it out. If you want, I got the crash data right here. If you wanted to look, just briefly, it's a lot of, a lot of narrative in the city PD, they do a great job of writing it up.
Jenna?
Thank you. Um, I just have a question about these acronyms, can you, what's TOD again?
Time of Day.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then what's EB?
Eastbound.
Okay, and WB, westbound?
Westbound, yeah.
Okay.
Those are traffic engineering terms.
I know, that's why I like reading this, and I'm like, ah, little handicapped, but, um, thanks.
You bet.
So it, it sounds to me like eliminating the lane on the south side is not something the state's interested in doing. Am I hearing that correctly?
From my perspective?
Yeah.
That'd, wouldn't even hit my radar, wouldn't hit my radar. Adding a lane that is a viable, holding 30, 40, 50% of the traffic to head south to get home in the PMP, that's a real solution, in my, in my opinion. I wouldn't put a dual right there. We have moved the majority of the trucks out where they belong, not coming through We have moved the majority of the trucks out where they belong, not coming through that intersection. When I see our devices being hit, they're being hit because people are taking the dual left too fast and sliding into the signal poles and the pertinences. That's the crash data that I read.
Mr. Bond?
Are you interested?
So I probably drove that intersection probably every day for the last 30 years, so I'm pretty familiar with that. But I would hate to see that right through lane removed because folks coming out of 14th, Albertson's, and wanting to head that way. If they're forced to turn right, that doesn't do anything. Then they're just going to be, you know, shoved over, try to get in that single lane. So I guess my other question is, is there some signage or something that, because what we're describing in terms of that drag racing, the two lanes, try to get through that intersection, trying to merge in the intersection? And/or trying to merge in that short space before the Walgreens approach? You know, I think that would make sense to make it a little longer. Is there any signage or anything that is at your disposal that could perhaps? Because it's a matter of courtesy. Sometimes people are very courteous and they do that zipper. But sometimes they're drag racing. Yeah.
Well, the problem is the person in the left lane, like he said, has been sitting there for 45 seconds waiting to get through that light. And some guy that doesn't want to wait pulls up in that right lane, and this guy knows it, and he's like, no way. I haven't seen it, you know, and that's when, that's where the problem comes in. And it's every single night.
And it was snow and ice or rain. It's just mostly dry.
I have a question. Okay, so during the peak times, I mean, is this out of the, I'm like speaking crazy, but if you slow down during those peak times, the light like prior, like over at 17th or 15th Street and then even Collins? Or 13th, sorry, thanks. So if you slow down the times at those intersections, you know, to give them more time, less traffic up front at that intersection, do you see what I'm saying? Or even on CY, I know there's another one that's by Ace Hardware Now and stuff, if you slow those lights down, does it make this other situation better?
Do we stop them before they get there?
Yeah, to get these other people that are congesting that area so that you don't throw off your timing of the lights?
I understand that, but everybody's going to their residence up by the mountain in that area. They're all repeating this every day.
Yeah.
Right? And I've heard from some locals that know that they're not going to be there at 5 o'clock because they already know it. Why take another route? We have tried that in downtown Sheridan and Lander for pedestrian reasons, not because of stacking and storage issues. It's a good question. Honestly, I think that's one we got. We got a simulation software. And you know what's going to happen anyways? When we start building first and popular, it'll be built in. We'll have a delay like you've never seen.
Right.
I hate to, but we'll all look at that.
Well, it is because, I mean, it is a peak time. And like you say, I mean, it's the grocery store, but he's trying to get to the grocery store, get their prescriptions, get their, you know, whatever they need, and then they're trying to get out and get home. And so if you slowed that all down before it even got there.
I think that adds to aggressive driving, though, in Wyoming. It's like when you get behind a slow-moving vehicle leaving town and you can't pass and you can't pass. At some point, you're just, you need a passing lane when you're on 2026, right? That's why we put passing lanes in Wyoming prematurely.
So can we, as a council, can we, even though there's no direction requested, can we get, somehow get Andrew to look at this and have him see if there's a, don't you shake your head no. And see if there's a possibility to extend that down further as far as we can get it to help this merging issue we have for people going south?
Mr. Mayor, I would be pleased to look into that. I think the issue is going to be whether or not we've got width all the way to the next appropriate.
Right. And I don't think you'll be pleased to do it, but I think you'll do it. We're going to be honest.
We don't do roundabouts either.
I vote roundabout.
Thank you. Joel, thank you for coming. It sounds like
They're bending the roundabouts where they can't figure out how to get out and they're just going in circles.
You're not interested in getting rid of the lane, so it sounds like it's our issue to deal with, so.
Yeah, like I said, we'll do the top items I talked about. You'll see better striping, you'll see account, we'll re-time it. I'll look at your issues. My timing engineer's going to tell me to
Can we do a roundabout?
I resign.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you. All right, let's, that was a good discussion. Let's move on. Yes, sir.
See, you've got that same issue with the races at 15th Street and Outer Drive southbound because you have the stacking on the inside lane and then the outside lane isn't used because you've got a merge right up.
Thank you.
Just like you do here.
Thanks.
And that is a wide-eyed issue.
And
The roads are closing all the time.
Something about the left turns, the dual left turns. I think that part of the reason they're running into the posts on that outside lane is the people on the inside left turn lane are, yes, sir, because I run into that all the time, making that left turn to head northbound on I-25 at Outer Drive. That I would say 25% of the time, if I'm in that outside left turn lane, I have to stop because the guy's making the left turn from the inside to the outside lane. And I either run into him or I run over the post.
Joel?
But the chief won't let me start hitting.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to teams hand raising. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the opportunity we have to bring back an option to you as it relates to providing another means, if you will, of your colleagues on the council giving you the signal that they want to speak next and appropriately queuing all those requests almost automatically. And so the floor has been looking into this with IT and we think we have a solution that with some training and implementation on your iPads, we may have a way to go here.
Excellent.
If I could turn some time over to the floor on IT, that'd be
Do we need to join?
Yeah.
So I think that IT has helped everyone get connected to Teams. Is that right?
Might hold off joining just yet. Yeah. Go ahead and hit the red button to exit out.
Everybody or?
If you're joined. Not you, Amber, please stay.
Amber, hit the red button twice.
Okay. Would you like? So hopefully you see a join button there. And if you hit that join, if you hit the join button, the one key that we want to show everybody before you join is that whole feedback issue that we were just recognizing. You want to make sure that you join without, with your audio turned off. So if you hit join and then down there at the bottom, your microphone should be turned off, your camera should be turned off, and then you also want to turn off your speaker. Okay? And that way, you're turning off all audio. So you have other audio sources that are coming in and out, so you're just joining to be part of the meeting. You do not want to have any audio and video going across on this. So once you turn off your audio, you can go ahead and join.
So Kyle?
Is everybody getting joined okay?
She has some permission issues.
Figured everyone
Oh, Steve Cathy.
Video chat.
Let's go ahead and circle.
Million zooms. Go to meetings.
And hit join?
Oh, she's joining right now.
Teams needs permissions to make and receive calls.
I got Lisa, Jenna.
You want to take a look at hers real quick?
Kyle.
All right. Is everybody else joined okay? All right, then if you, you'll see down there, if you want to view the list of participants, that's the two people button. That's at the very bottom left. If you want to see all the participants, which for time, for, just for this demonstration purposes, I'll go ahead and let you do that. Okay? Yep. So now we can see everybody. And then I don't want to get ahead of pride. If you are wanting to speak or ask the mayor to queue you up to be in the next line to speak, yep, you would just choose, there's a picture of a hand with the face, the different icons. Should be like the third one in probably. And then there is a little raise hand button.
Nice.
So if you hit that, now you're seen. Okay? Lisa's number two, Amber's number three, Randy's four. So now the mayor is able to see who has their hand raised and who's next up in the list, and then he'll call on each of those individually. And of course, you can hit the hand button again to put your hand back down. And then the order will change accordingly.
So so far, right now, only Brandy, Jenna, oh, only Jenna, only Jenna has her hand raised. And now Steve does. So now Amber does. So if I wanted to, once I, do I click on them then? And I can put lower hand after I've called on them?
You can.
And that takes them off. Okay. Raise hand as well, lower hand. Ray, your hand is down. Hands down, sucker. Override. Mr. Bond, knock it off. I'm kidding. That's kind of wonderful, actually, and it numbers them too, so accuse them in order. That would be, I think that's fantastic.
The biggest tricky part that we ran into was the whole audio piece. Because if one person leaves their audio on, you'll get that feedback. So it's just, it's just like that. So it's just real important that you keep your audio off so you don't
To me, I mean, even Lisa, when the state guy, you're like, hey, you know? Because you don't always see everybody, especially when we're on the dais out there. It's really difficult sometimes to see everybody. This, to me, just seems much easier, much more professional.
Whatever makes it, you're the one that's calling on people.
I think it would make it easier for you folks, too, to not have to keep trying to make eye contact to make sure I'm seeing you and, you know, you can go on about your train of thought and just throw your hand up and, I don't know, I'd like to, I guess we'll try it and
And this is just for the dais?
Yeah, and here, I don't think it's nearly as important because we're less formal. But if you put your hand up, because I'd like, I literally want to use it tonight just so we know how it works. Jenna, I see that your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to forget what I was going to say. No. So no, I like this idea and you're talking about using it out there, right? Okay. So my only thing is for all of us that are not like completely tech savvy and trying to read the agenda and everything else on there at the same time and then flipping back, you know what I mean? Where's Teams again?
One of the things that will help you is we also get these every night that are always at your, so if you follow along on this instead, or do you have a way to show her how to go in and out? So in other words, even though we have these on the dais, we don't have the entire 300 pages that are accessed. Is there something in there they're wanting to access also? Is there a way to split screen it? I guess that's what I'm asking you.
I don't know about split screen with the iPad, but that double-click feature, if you double-click, then it'll show you your different open applications and then you just have to touch which one you want to go to. Double-click again and you just go to the other one.
How do you make these all go away?
If you want it to go off, you double-click and then you swipe up.
Okay. Got it.
That closes you out of
So realistically, the only time you need to be in this part is if you want to raise your hand. The rest of the time, you can be in your other Just like that, yeah, that's pretty simple, actually.
Unless it gets heated in the Unless it gets heated in the camp.
I just start throwing stuff then. I mean, that works. So Amber, were you able to kind of discern?
Yeah, I think I'm good. Should be able to manage it when I get back.
As soon as I answered you, I put it down so that I didn't call on you again. That's just a habit I'm going to get into. Jenna, your hand's up again. Do you want some? I'm kidding. I'm just kidding. But, oh, see, oh, that's why. Okay, there we go. Can somebody raise their hand real quick? I want to see if it pops up on this. Yep, there it is. Great. Awesome. Yeah, I like it. Very nice. Thank you, guys, for that hard work. That's, that should be really, really better, much better.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll be banging on your door. Okay, any more questions or concerns with that particular application? All right, let's move forward to the sports and recreation study. Oh, sorry, Zalima. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zalima and her team have been working real hard to consider the subsidy question for recreation, very much along the lines of all the other subsidy discussions that those of you who have been on the council have seen a number of times prior to now. For those of you who have not, this is the opportunity to take some analysis as it relates to how we get to our subsidy and perhaps some recommendations that we are priming you with as it relates to potential implementations that we could try to reduce the subsidy, if not eliminate it altogether. I mean, as being the larger goal that we certainly think about a lot at the staff level. So with that in mind, Zalima has a presentation this evening that will walk you through a number of those elements, some considerations that she would have you think about as we get potentially closer to implementation on a number of these recreational enterprises that you all have the honor of overseeing with all of us. So if I may defer the floor, Mr. Mayor, to Zalima, that'd be great.
Zalima.
Thank you. Mayor, councilors, good evening. I'm going to ask for your grace tonight. I still have a little bit of vacation brain. I was in Mexico last week, so trying to just, you know, get my game face back on and dive back into our important conversations. So I do have members of my team here tonight that I want to introduce. So Phil Moya is the Recreation Division Manager. You've seen him in some of our other discussions. Paul Zawada is the Supervisor over Sports and Athletics. And Jennifer Harvey is the Supervisor in the Rec Center, so over the Recreation Center. So I'm going to start with a presentation that probably looks pretty familiar to you guys. I've been trying to keep a consistent format so that you know what to expect in these conversations. So we'll start with a recap of fiscal year 2022. The Recreation Center is bustling all throughout the year. There isn't really a time that there aren't a lot of activities going on. Monday through Thursday and Saturdays are probably our busiest days when you factor in league sports and other evening activities that we have going on at the Recreation Center. Although some additional programming that we've got that we're offering, we're hoping will bolster our Friday and Sunday attendance as well. So, you know, a lot of the recreation enterprises align very closely with the school district and what they're doing, and of course, recreation is no different. We start summer camp the Monday after school is out. And so August 20th of 2021 is when summer camp started. So our summer camp is offered to kids ages five through 12. And we offer two options. You can either choose weeks that you want to send your child to camp or you can do camp for the whole entirety of the summer. August 23rd to November 18th is our men's and women's volleyball leagues. August 31st through December 18th, our fall classes are in session. So we offer three recreation activity guides each year. There is one for the fall, one for the summer, and one for the winter and spring are combined. And so if you are looking at the fall activity guide, all of the classes are listed and those classes generally begin in late August. September 25th through the 30th of '21, that's our fourth and fifth grade boys and girls volleyball program. So we have a program. We were a partner with the school district. It's called CASPER. The acronym escapes me right now, but it's related to sports and education for children. So we, many people don't actually realize, we at the Recreation Center administer the elementary, fourth and fifth grade programs for basketball and volleyball for the school district. Practices happen at the homeschool for the students, and then games are played every Saturday at the Recreation Center. So that happens September through October. October 23rd of 2021 is when we did our annual Fall Festival. So this is a partnership with the Community Recreation Foundation. They are an agency, a nonprofit agency that we work very closely with that does fundraising throughout the year, and then all of those funds are given back to the Recreation Center in forms of scholarships for youth and elderly who could not maybe otherwise afford to participate in the programming at the Recreation Center. So the Fall Carnival is usually Halloween-themed. There's all kinds of games and activities going on. It's pretty fun of it. And free to the public, thanks to the community rep foundations. CASPER Open Volleyball Tournament happens mid-November. So that is a tournament that brings, is this what, 130 teams? Okay, 130 teams to CASPER for this tournament. So it's a pretty big deal, brings a lot of people to our community. November 20th through the 21st, or excuse me, November 20th of 2021 through March 5th of 2022 is when that school CASPER program again happens for fourth and fifth grade boys and girls basketball. November 22nd through February 17th is our men's and women's basketball leagues, adult basketball leagues. And then January through May, we're doing our winter and spring classes. January 6th through February 17th are our adult pickleball leagues. So I don't know if you guys have heard of pickleball? Kind of a growing thing nationwide, and certainly CASPER is no exception. People are very passionate about pickleball in this community. And so we have the honor of offering league programming for that sport now. February 21st to May 6th is adult coed volleyball leagues. March 19th and 20th is the CASPER Annual CASPER Youth Volleyball, or Basketball Tournament, excuse me. So this is, this is currently a partnership with Community Rec Foundation, the CASPER Recreation Leagues Association, and the CASPER Recreation Center, where we host an annual youth basketball tournament. This tournament also brings about 130, little more, teams to CASPER of young people, and we play at schools and, of course, at the Rec Center as well. April 9th was the Annual CASPER Coed Volleyball Tournament. That is a little bit smaller. That brings about 50 teams to the community. May 31st, 2022, is when summer classes began, and again, June 8th, summer camp began. That is a cap of our, a recap of our fiscal year. One thing, if you're really familiar with Rec Center programming, that you'll see is missing is our Beach Day. So unfortunately, Beach Day usually happens in July. Beach Day in July 2021 was canceled due to water restrictions because of the shortage of chemicals at the regional water plants. And so and then in 2020, it was also canceled because of COVID. So we were able to hold our annual Beach Day in July of 2022, which is technically fiscal year 2023, so that's why it's not on here. And although the numbers were smaller than we have historically seen, which was four to 500 kids usually participate in Beach Day, this year it was not quite as large, but we think the two years off, it's going to take a little time to to regrow that event. Also sponsored by the Community Recreation Foundation is a free day. So here are some participation numbers for you. I do want to start out by saying, and and I'm sorry I was remiss to not include it in the slide, but we saw over 113,000 visitors through the Recreation Center in fiscal year 22. So that obviously not only includes our members, but it includes all of the tournament spectators, all of the players, everybody that comes to the community to participate in the various activities going on at the Recreation Center. So I think that's pretty impressive. We had 397 memberships. Those are split between annual memberships and three and six month memberships. Those are the only two options that we offer, although we're looking to expand that. We had over 6,000 daily admissions. So this is where somebody just pays one time to get in to the Rec Center because they don't have a membership. We sold 77 daily punch passes, which equate to 10 visits each under punch pass. We had 88 rec room rentals. So we rent very, pretty much every space in the Rec Center is available to rent by private parties. And we see parties for baby showers, weddings, birthdays, celebrations of life. I mean, we've seen all kinds of of reasons for rentals of our rec space. And then, of course, they are utilized rented for league sport play as well. 24 people opt to just rent their locker for the whole year. In terms of classes, we offered 139 classes in FY22, had close to 3,000 participants in those classes. So in the summertime, it's probably the slowest time because most people want to be outside in the nice weather, which is pretty limited here. So that's when we reduce the class offerings because we know we're generally not going to get as many people interested in coming indoors for classes. So 35 classes offered in the summer, 48 classes offered in the fall, 56 classes offered in that winter-spring timeframe. So our our camp is probably the flagship program at the Recreation Center. So again, we offer summer camp, we offer spring break camps. So anytime the school district is not in attendance, or students are not in attendance for the school district, we offer a camp to give an option for kids to come and enjoy their time while their parents are at work. So for summer camp, we had 184 full camp participants, 173 weekly camp participants, 48 Super Fun Days, 21 that did the full spring break, 23 that opted to just drop in on a day-to-day basis during spring break, 15 did the full winter break, 26, again, opted to just do some days during the winter break. And then we had 552 Friday at the Rec Center. So that is actually a program where we partner with Wood School. And 33 Fridays throughout the school year, they bring their kids to the to the school to enjoy, or to the Rec Center to enjoy a Friday at the Recreation Center. So in total, over 1,000 more kiddos come through the Recreation Center in our camp-type programs every year. So these are the events that were hosted and or coordinated by CASPER Recreation Center staff. And so a lot of these were included in the timeline. But I will point out that I did put the annual Beach Day on there because it was planned for July 23rd. So all the work was invested in in putting that event together. But then we canceled it July 19th because of water restrictions. So and and again, brought it back, and will continue to offer that event into the future. The Open Volleyball Tournament, the Fall Festival again, one that was not included in the in the timeline because it didn't actually happen at the Recreation Center, is our annual Craft Fair at the Ford Wyoming Center. The reason I included this in the recap, though, is because Recreation Center staff actually does all of the organization and coordination for that Craft Fair in support of the Community Rec Foundation. All the proceeds for that Craft Fair go to the Community Rec Foundation, and again, go into those scholarships for the programs at the Rec. So this is a lot of staff time for city recreation. They spend weeks, if not months, preparing for the event and then, you know, setting up for the event and things like that, obviously in conjunction with the Ford Wyoming Center staff and volunteer members of the Rec Foundation, too. We hosted six adult and youth sport leagues and league championships, CASPER Youth Baseball Tournament, CASPER Coed Volleyball Tournament, and then, of course, the youth camps during all school breaks. During the summer, again, our our less busy season, 69 hours a week were open. During the rest of the year, we're open 99 hours a week, generally speaking. During the weekdays, we're open 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then some reduced hours on weekends, particularly on Sunday, where we see diminished participation. And to do all this, we have 51 to 70 employees, the vast majority of which are non-full-time. We only have two full-time staff in recreation. That's Jennifer and her recreation coordinator, Lori. And then we have two full-time staff in sports as well, and that's Paul and his coordinator, Amy. So this is a five-year recap of our subsidy. And I did add, which you might know was not included in your memo, a line to show you what 2023 looks like, which we're going to talk about in a lot more detail. In the memo, I tried to explain the vast difference in this. So historically, athletics maintenance was a parks function and resided in the general fund. In 2020, in 2020, excuse me, there was a restructure, and Paul not only was, had been the supervisor over athletics maintenance, but he moved into recreation and also took over all the sports programming for indoor sports as well. And so this big jump in expenses is because Paul and all of his staff came over into the recreation enterprise. The material costs, like fertilizers and pesticides and and material for the athletic fields, all remained in the Parks Athletics Maintenance Fund, but the staff moved over. This year, I moved it back. And I will explain why in a little while. And next year, it will be gone altogether because I am proposing to you that we actually take Paul's function as athletics maintenance and indoor sports and create its own fund, its own rec enterprise fund, and remove those responsibilities and burdens out of parks, which is a general fund operation, and out of recreation, which, of course, is its own enterprise operation.
And I'm assuming, looking at that chart in the bottom right-hand corner, that the second sheet of ice that we have pledged to do with the private funding is to come through, that we're going to be able to wipe out a big chunk of that subsidy?
No, sir. So, Mayor, Councilors, it's really important to remember that all of the rec functions, ice arena, recreation, and aquatics are actually separate funds. So they are all individual, separate recreation funds. Even though they reside at one address, their operations are completely separate. So that will wipe out the subsidy at the ice arena, but will not impact the Recreation Center subsidy. Great question. Appreciate your clarification.
Mr. Camera. I don't I don't see a hand up, so I can't acknowledge you.
Sorry, I get in the habit. Thanks, Zalima, for the information. I wonder, for the purposes of just simply capturing the trend at the Rec Center for the past few years, is it not possible to, you know, maybe not on paper, in ink, but could we not, the, you know, the 25%, 29%, 29%, the unusual activity there, could we not simply, for the purposes of this graph, simply add those expenses back into that budget just to, so we have a kind of more accurate historical trend? Otherwise, it seems like we, otherwise, it seems like the cost recovery trend, like that information is less valuable to me personally if there's that weird anomaly right in the middle of it. So I was just wondering how much work that takes to, you know, potentially go back into 2021, too, and, you know, add those costs in to see what that does.
But. Mayor, Counselor, that's actually probably a pretty easy thing for us to do. Athletics Maintenance is its own organization within the Parks Fund.
Copy paste over or something?
Yeah. And so we should be able to take the cost of that org and apply it here. And I could be, I would be happy to do that in a future.
My guess is it's probably between 45 and 49, but, you know.
It's probably a safe bet. Okay, so just as a reminder, these were the city council established goals for 2021 and 20 through 2023 as it relates to the recreation funds. And so you tasked us with completing a broad-based study of all the actions that could be undertaken to reduce the investment that the general fund has to make into subsidizing these operations. And so you asked for a complete report of all the funding sources. You asked us to compile a list of adverse reactions should funding be cut. You asked us to determine needed rate increases for each facility to break even. Those are the three items I will be giving you updates on tonight. You also asked us to update our business plans to include all the recommendations, and we will do that after we finish this presentation, get any feedback that we get from you. And my hope is that by the end of March, we will be able to to present you with the completed business plans for all of the rec enterprises. Because by then, I'm hoping that we will have completed all of these presentations. After this, golf is the only enterprise we have left. So for a complete report of all funding sources, these are the general funding sources for the Recreation Center Fund. And so these first titles are the general titles that are within the budget. Some of them are confusing to me and need some clarification for how they actually function within recreation. And so we have admissions, which are pretty self-explanatory. Those are our daily admissions. We have user fees, which is actually our leases and our field rentals. So Park, or Paul oversees all of the athletic field leases and rentals, and that's where that revenue goes. Classes, of course, at the Recreation Center, again, not to include aquatics or ice. Those are separate, and they go in their funds. This is strictly at the Recreation Center. Concessions is actually just vending machines that we have. The Recreation Center itself does not offer any concessions at this time. We have merchandise sales, pretty small. Season passes, so those are our memberships that are annual or six-month. Rentals and leases are actually where we rent the rooms within the Recreation Center to people for parties. Contributions are actually donations generally from the community. Mislanious revenue is Community Rec Foundation reimbursements for solvships. And then the big one, of course, is the transfer in from the general fund. That is our subsidy or our subsidy infusion or general fund investment to get us to 100% in a $1.2 million budget this year. So in Part B, you asked us to compile a list of adverse reactions to programs should funding be cut. That was one of the first things I did when I first started my position a little over a year ago in Parks and Recreation. And at the Recreation Center, we decided immediately we would likely have to close on Sundays and reduce hours otherwise to save largely the personnel expense, which is the lion's share of our of our operations budget. And of course, we would have to eliminate programming specifically if we cut hours because we just wouldn't be open to to have classes and other things, other activities going on at the center. However, in doing this analysis, we also identified that there's a lot of opportunity that would gain us more than cutting services. And so that's really what I'd like to focus the rest of our time on. And of course, we did do the homework to determine the rate increases that would be needed for the fund to break even. And so I will be sharing those with you as well. So these are the strategies to reduce expenses and increase revenue, and they are either already being implemented or we plan to implement them in the very near future. So the first one is to complete the fitness room remodel and implement specialized fitness programming. So in the FY23 budget, you were gracious enough to grant us $100,000 to convert the Sunshine Room, which was an underutilized youth space, to become a fitness studio that we could do cycling classes and then specialty fitness classes like yoga and different things like that. And so that remodel is complete. We debuted that room at our 40th anniversary last Saturday. People were very, very excited and receptive about it. I'm pretty happy with how it's come together. And first classes programming that are in February, correct? So we're excited about that. So that one's already in the works. Restructuring partnerships to reflect increasing operating costs and and our requested reimbursement. So as I mentioned, we have partnerships with the school district. We have partnerships with the CASPER Recreation, CASPER Rec League Association, that's sports, and then the Community Recreation Foundation. All of these partnerships have been in place for decades, and they're great partnerships. We value them very much. But they have not evolved in the reimbursement structure like the work that we're doing for those groups have evolved or the costs have evolved over time. And so we are already working with the CASPER Rec League Association to restructure that partnership so that the city will be taking over a majority of the responsibilities, which, by the way, we did anyways, really. But then it also means that all of the revenue from league sports will actually come to the city, not to the CRLA. So mutually beneficial. We will take on the burden of employing all the officials, which CRLA currently does, but we really believe that that will be a mutually beneficial shift in how we operate. We're also working with the school district and the CASPER program to talk to them about how we need to restructure reimbursements so that we're not subsidizing the school sports program. Then we also want to reduce operational costs. So just this activity guide, maybe the one before, we started selling ads, and we were really clever on my staff's part to target our leaseholders. So we're talking CASPER Soccer Club and, you know, CASPER Youth Baseball and people who we already have relationships with that are related to city events that we, you know, work very closely with, inviting them to have ads in our activity guide. Several of them took, so now we're able to use that additional revenue to offset the cost of printing the guide, which is kind of a neat thing. We also want to appropriately manage non-full-time staffing. So this is one across the board. I've been really tasking my staff with evaluating that non-full-time staffing, making sure we've got the right people in the right places at the right time and we're not spending dollars inappropriately. One of the things that has already actually come out of this is we worked very closely with Jill Johnson and her finance team in relation to our money handling policy, and we're able to come up with a solution to eliminate the requirement of having two people man the front desk at all times for the purposes of cash handling. So so now we're able to just have one staff member at the front desk rather than two, which is a cost savings. And then, of course, we've talked about it with the others, passing on those credit card fees to the people who who choose to use credit cards to purchase our classes or other services. We're definitely focused on improving our marketing of programs, classes, passes, and facility rentals. If you haven't picked up an activity guide in a while, I suggest that you do. There are so many things that we're offering that are new and exciting and fun. Even in preparing this presentation, I came across a couple that I wasn't even aware of. We just offer a lot of great programming for the community. And just this team is continually looking at more ways and and more programming and different things that we can do to to drive business to the Recreation Center. Some of that also includes new and improved events, programming, and service. So this is an ad for our 40th anniversary. Like I said, that's. Like I said, that, that event happened last Saturday, and we saw, Jennifer said she lost count at about 2:50, so more than 250 people come through the rec center during that free timeframe that we offered people to participate in classes for free, and just, just to see what, what we have to offer. And we ended up garnering 42 memberships out of that afternoon event. So, that was exciting. This is also an example of the improved marketing. This piece was actually done by our communications team, and there was a whole package put together for us to utilize on Facebook and within the rec center. Just, it's been really effective throughout the rec enterprises to have professional quality marketing, and I think that we're seeing the benefits of that across the board. So, develop more outdoor recreation-themed programming. So, really, you know, the buzzword in recreation as of late is outdoor recreation. And so, we want to get ahead of that. We want to make sure that, that we are programming things within the rec center that help people enjoy the outdoor activities that they like, things like archery, things like fishing. We can offer classes to help people learn to do that, and then go out and enjoy it in the community. We are looking to expand and coordinate childcare for facility users. We recognize that parents want to participate in League Sports. They want to go to a workout. They want to do things within the Recreation Center, and childcare can be a barrier to doing that. And so, we are looking for some exciting new ways that we can offer those childcare services, so that parents can participate and know that their kids are safe and close. Evaluate and modify membership packages. So, as I mentioned, we only offer memberships for one year or six months. We are looking at doing possibly one month or three months, because we recognize that there are a lot of snowbirders in our community, and they may only be here for about three months throughout the year. So, we want to give them that option as well. And of course, we're, we'll talk about user rates a little bit with the model. And then, of course, the big one is to create a sports and athletic enterprise fund and transfer those associated expenses and to be fair revenues into that fund. The primary driver is not necessarily to save the Recreation Fund. It will also save the General Fund, because the parks, parks maintenance for athletic fields will not reside in the, in the General Fund any longer. But the biggest driver is that we recognize that sports and athletics should not be a subsidized thing. It is, it is a lucrative enterprise, and we should, at the very least, be breaking even. And so, the intention is to create a fund that we can start working towards zero subsidy, or better, at some point in the future. So, that is my presentation. While Flor is pulling up our rate model, can we enter?
Yeah, me.
Yeah, and you're first. Lisa, please. Thank you.
It was a test.
Noted.
So, I thought that you were going, you were also looking at doing something different with the concessions and merchandise, to help increase that as well.
Mayor, Councilor, thank you. Yes, we are looking to expand our merchandise to, for things like lotions and, and items that are needed often, but we don't necessarily sell right now. As far as concessions, it is a future hope that we could incorporate actual concessions, fresh, fresh food, if that's what we can call hot dogs, but, you know, food that we can offer to people that's hot, rather than just vending machine snacks.
Right.
And, but that is into the future.
Mr. Kathy.
You had all of the classes that you were talking about, that people can enroll in. Do you have to be a member of the rec center to participate in one of the classes?
Mayor, Councilor, excellent question. You do not. You can enroll in classes at the rec center, and you don't have to be a member there to participate. The broad categories of classes that we have, and there are so many, and they're very varied, but the broad categories of classes that we offer are arts and crafts. We offer sports classes. We offer fit, and sports includes like gymnastics, and fencing, and taekwondo. Then, we also offer fitness classes, so specific to fitness. And then, we offer, who am I forgetting? Oh, dance. Yes, thank you. Dance classes. Absolutely. So, a wide variety in each of those subcategories, and like I said, always coming up with new and fresh ideas, and the instructors to teach those fun classes.
Steve, you'll need to rejoin. I went to lower your head, and I booted you.
I saw that.
I'm learning. I'm learning. I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, dive into the model then. So, this is a dynamic model that you all know Pete built for me, and I've used it ever since. And so, we tailor it to each individual fund, because they all are quite varied. And so, can I have you zoom out a little bit? Oh, perfect. Thank you. So, this section of the model represents our current state as it is budgeted. So, in the FY '23 budget, we budgeted $30,000 for daily admissions, $60,000 for season passes and memberships, $40,000 for rentals, and have kind of broken it down for you, and then total classes. And then, we have some, some other categories of revenue that are a little less dynamic. We have a little less fluctuation, and so, so then, in this portion of the model, we show you what the effects of changes are that we make below. So, if you'll scroll down. So, here is where we can actually dynamically make changes. We can either... We can show you the impact of the changes that we make. If we change the cost of any of our services by a percentage basis, or by an actual dollar amount, and then also, if we have an increase or a decrease in participation into the rec center for those programs. So, this first model represents our current, what I call optimized. So, in the FY '23 budget, even though our subsidy goal for the Recreation Center is 50%, our budget only reflected about a 45% cost recovery. So, this is an optimized model to show you what I need to do, what me and my team need to do, to get us to that 50% goal. And really, we can do that, I think, without raising any rates. This 12% and 15% actually represents what we were able to accomplish by the end of fiscal year '22. You remember, we create our budgets pretty early, and so, sometimes, there's three, or four, or five months that are undeveloped, and so, we're making some conservative guesses. And so, we ended up much better in daily admissions. And so, raising 12% and 15% attendance is going to get us to the numbers we hit last year, and we don't expect those numbers to go down. We only expect them to increase. With some of the other programming, we're looking at very, very nominal increases in our memberships, in our rentals, and in our classes. And we believe that we can accomplish that with enhanced marketing, just, just better targeted marketing of the services and facilities that we have available to us through events like the anniversary celebration, and, and other, again, targeted advertising out into the community and beyond. So, then, we will reflect 10% increase in merchandise costs, likely just to keep up with inflation. And then, by adding those extra items that we think should sell pretty well, we may have an increase of 5% into our merchandise. This increase in the cost of the classes actually reflects the cost-of-living adjustment that was recently given to employees. So, when the Recreation Center develops the classes, they take each class individually. They identify how much the instructor's going to cost, how much the materials for the class will cost, and then, they identify what the cost of the class should be, and a minimum number of participants we have to make, we have to have in the class in order for the class to break even. If we don't get the number of participants registered for the class, we will not offer it. Okay? So, that, so, the cost of the instructor is built into the cost of the class, so you will see that reflected automatically. The rate increases that we actually implemented in FY '22 are for the memberships.
Sorry, Councilor, I couldn't see the screen, so we're trying to...
We share. It's back. Thank you. Okay. So, questions about what I'm calling our current optimized plan, that gets us to our 50% cost recovery goal in this current fiscal year, I believe we can do. Okay. Then, you asked to see what it looks like to have no subsidy in the Recreation Center Fund. As you can imagine, with a cost recovery goal of 50%, we pretty much have to double the cost of everything across the board. Although, you will see, in some cases, like the school Casper program, the school district would likely opt not to participate, and we would just not see that revenue at all. So, I took that out completely, because if we were going to ask them for 200% of the contribution they make now, or 100% of the contribution they make now, they would likely say, "We can't afford that either, so no thanks," and find an alternative. So, so I did account for that, but we're looking at 200 to 150% increases. And then, this part of the model shows what those adjusted prices would be, based on the increases that I'm showing over here. So, if we raise the daily admission cost 200%, it would go from $5 to $15. And it would cost $15 to get in the door, to use our facility, and likely, people would not come. I think it's, it's a tough, it would be a very tough endeavor to try to get us to 100% cost recovery at the Recreation Center. And in my humble opinion, that's not what we're there for. We're there to provide recreation opportunities for everyone in our community at an affordable price, which I think is why most communities take on recreation centers. Questions? Comments?
I have no hands. Oh, Jenna, would you like to floor?
Yes, Mayor, please. Just have a question, or like, just maybe you're already doing it or not, too, but as far as like putting outreach out for the classes and things, I know that you already do that through the school district, but I have, does your, do people do the like clubs, such as Scouts or 4H? I know like the county with the 4H program, they do the archery, like you mentioned, all that. And there's badges and things for Scouts. I just feel like that's a good way to reach out to them, especially if you're doing the outdoor recs up, because that, like outside, not just inside, that's their wheelhouse, you know? There's a lot of kids out there that need it.
Mayor, Councilor, I do know that my staff has reached out to the school district in particular with regards to the outdoor rec programming that we want to do, and as well as the fitness aspect for classes that may require credit. They could come and participate in our classes at the Recreation Center. Beyond that, I'm not familiar, and I would invite Phil or Jen, maybe, to speak to if we're doing it, and if we're not, excellent idea, and we will definitely incorporate that.
Cool. I'll give them contacts.
Mayor, Councilor, we are, being an archery coach and stuff, it's like an automatic for me to reach out to the community, and to those that are doing it already. So, we have that aspect. We have connections with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, so it's a big effort to get everybody to kind of help each other. So, it's a constant, and hopefully, we'll grow everything that we have to offer and get more.
Our collaboration.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilor, those partnerships are really important, and we're, we're identifying opportunities across all the rec enterprise funds to engage other community groups. One of the things that we discussed is, you know, some, some of the rentals that we offer right now, there's a Nerf gun rental, so you can like rent the activity room and shoot Nerf guns at each other. And I know, you know, maybe companies would be interested in doing team building or something like that. We're planning possibly an escape room rental, so expanding into that, and then, reaching out to even corporations, not just nonprofits in the school district, but reaching out to corporations and seeing if they're interested in coming and doing activities at the Recreation Center. It's definitely something that is on our radar.
Go ahead, Jen, if you have...
A follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we get a team meeting over at the rec center with Nerf?
I'll Nerf gun every one of you all day long.
Can you sign us up?
Anything else, Zalima?
I don't have anything unless you have questions. I would ask for some direction. Mrs. Johnson's going to be speaking to you shortly about creating that sports and athletics fund. And so, I'm happy to ask or answer any questions you might have before that conversation with her, because she will need your formal authority to do that.
Hers is, Jill's presentation's information only, so what, what exact direction are you looking for here, Carter?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilors, I would say that at this point in time, we really need you to be aware of what some of the ideas are that we have in mind, in that we do want to bring back a hard proposal that would ask for your support along the lines of some of the things that Zalima suggested tonight, to try to bring the Recreation Center enterprise into clearer focus as it relates to maybe a more aggressive subsidy goal, or with respect to whatever other directives you might have along those lines from a cost recovery objective.
If I'm correct, what I heard you say to us was, you don't, you're not looking at increasing the cost of folks coming to the rec center. These are all things that, that, well, in a layman's term, you're betting on the come, you're betting on, on more merchandise, you know, more usage. So, so I guess with that said, I don't understand what direction we could possibly offer you.
Well, at this point, I don't think we need anything, Mr. Mayor.
And it said direction. That's why I'm confused, because I don't, I don't see where there's an avenue for us to, to do that for you at this particular time.
Mayor, I suppose if you were strongly opposed to any of the strategies that I discussed with you, or if there are other strategies, like Counselor Jensen mentioned, I would certainly have my team do some investigation and work on that, and incorporate it into the business plan, if that's appropriate.
I can tell you, this council would certainly be opposed to the rate model that's up on the board right now. We would not want to see any of the, any of the entrance fees or anything increased at this point. And I think I'm correct in that. Am I not?
I have a question.
Sure.
Mayor, the, so the, the adjusted price listed in that column, was that an across-the-board percentage? You may have said this, but I, it's, it's based on that.
It directly correlates. So, this 200% increase reflects there. This 150% increase reflects here.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
And that's in the event that we, we wanted to do away with all the subsidy, and there was no general fund influx. I think we are well aware as a council that, like Zalima said earlier, recreation is something that we need to provide for everyone in our community. And that's why this is subsidized. I think we all get that. So, at this time, Zalima, I don't think there's any direction to give you. It looks like you guys are on par without having to raise any rates whatsoever to try to, to get to the 50% on your own. And I think it's going to be a hide and, hide and watch, or a wait-and-see type of thing, if you will. Jenna?
Can I? Yes, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I? So, when you're talking about these increases, how much of a difference would it make if you just increased like the rental rates just per site, not the admissions or the season's passes, but if you were just to do just a little bit, not, I'm not talking like 200 or 150%, but... Just a little.
Those are very dramatic, intended to show you what we would have to do in order to get to zero subsidy, right?
Right. But I mean, what kind of...
So, we, this is very dynamic. So, how much, how much would you like to see?
I don't know. Let's say, if you raised, let me look at this better. Just the rental rates. Like, we're looking at, okay, say, whatever you have here, that's $25, $30, $50, $75, you know, like...
So, would you like to raise it $5?
Let, no, let, I'm take, like, because the rental rates for places, I mean, you can get some, make some up some money there, you know? A lot of people would pay just to rent it. So, say, what if you did, I'm guessing the 150 or the 175 is like the pool rental or something, right, for the aquatic center perhaps? I don't know. I'm just guessing that that's, looks familiar. So, what if you did that to 200, just like a flat 200 at the 150? You know, it's like an extra 50 bucks, but when you... You know what I mean? Like, a little bit here and there, but if the rentals is where most of the money can be recouped, I think, too. Or like, say, whatever's $25, it's probably like a conference room or something, right, for like a little party? I mean, even that, raise it... raise it up to 50, or 75 even on that one, you know?
Increase it some, increase by $50, is that good?
Yeah.
So as we change these rates...
I mean, it's potato, but...
You're going to see the adjusted price over here, but you're also going to see the impact that it has on the subsidy. So you can compare the costs and see. So certainly if that's direction council wants to give, we can look at increasing those rates. We are actually looking at rate increases, just likely not for 2024, for that fiscal year '24, would likely be for '25.
I'm just thinking, people typically would pay...
We just implemented rate increases in FY '22.
So it would probably be prudent to wait until you folks are ready to...
Well, the going rate might...
We will take the direction if you give it to us, though.
Yeah. So it just came from, because of the going rate for different rental areas and spaces around town, I mean, we kind of got to stay competitive, I feel like. I mean, yes, it's there, but it's also, you know, we want to lower our subsidy, too. So it would be, I don't know, worth looking into what the going rate for rental spaces is around town.
Well, I'm assuming when you guys come to us with a proposal to raise rates in fiscal '25, which would be in two years, you'll probably have done your homework and find out what you're up raising the bowling alley and everybody else is charging for theirs. I'm assuming we'll...
Stay competitive.
Because we want to be underneath them a little bit.
Absolutely.
We're targeting a different audience.
If you want to look at an increase in fiscal year '24, we are preparing our operations budgets now. So we could look at that if that is the direction council wanted us to go.
I don't think it is. Mr. Kathy?
I was going to say, since she was talking about the rental rates, inflation's been anywhere from 7% to 9%. Would we want to put that kind of a rate increase on the rentals to go along with inflation, but leave the daily admissions and things so we don't get chewed up over another 50 cents?
Right. And that's the other issue that we have to keep in mind when we're talking about raising rates. If you remember, and you knew Counselors weren't here at the time, but we literally talked about raising the swimming rate 50 cents. And I mean, we caught backlash like you wouldn't believe over 50 cents. So this is a different audience that we're targeting. And so we just have to be really cognitive of who we're serving and why we have this fund. It's really important. So Lisa, sorry, go ahead, Zulima.
Sorry, Mayor, Counselor. You know, I would say, and I believe I've said this maybe when we were talking aquatics and ice as well, but to Counselor Jensen's point, rentals are often acquired by people who can afford to rent the facility or the space. And so my personal belief is that it probably wouldn't hurt to apply an inflation rate even going into FY '24. But to balance what you're saying about our audience, right, there are some rooms within the Recreation Center that are very affordable, and we would probably like to keep them very affordable for people who would otherwise not be able to rent space for their child to have a birthday party. But the Recreation Center, probably unlike any other area, offers us the opportunity to do that. We can have some rooms that are... that offer less amenities and are at a lower rate, and while the activity room and some of the themed rentals could be potentially a lot more. And people would pay the price because...
But before I go on to the next two people that want to speak, do we, as a consensus, is that something we want to do as a council? Do we want to have her look at possibly some inflationary rates for fiscal '24 for some of those rooms and have her bring that back? Is that...
Can I ask my question first?
Of course.
Because it goes into that. So I think before we look at raising the rates, shouldn't we see what's being rented and how often? So if you've got rooms that are just sitting vacant that are never being rented, then you might want to do something else altogether with that. And so, but then if you have some rooms that are just constantly being, or areas that are constantly being rented, then that would be the larger increase.
So these here represent the actual fiscal year '22 rentals for the facility. So, you know, you see that the Sage Studio was only rented seven times. The gym, that one gets a little wonky because we do rent the gym for sports. And so this is just a private citizen who rented the whole gym for, like, whatever activity they wanted. But the activity room was rented 24 times. So we have the data to do that analysis and see, would it make sense to raise the rate for, you know, the Sage Studio at seven rentals? Maybe not. But for the activity room, and like I said, these themed parties that are becoming very popular.
Right, those would be the ones. And then what is the Sage, sorry, follow-up, Sage Studio is being used for? What does that, what does that... Somebody correct that spelling if I was mistaken.
If you're sorry. Sorry, I'm embarrassed by that. Counselor, if I could defer to my staff, they would know better. What kind of activities are happening in the Sage Studio?
Sorry. Mayor, Counselors, the Sage Studio is our dance room, one of our dance rooms, as well as a lot of city entities come over and have meetings over there. We do trainings in that room, so that's kind of our go-to, catch-all.
Amber?
Thank you, Mayor. I am curious, Zulima, if you can remind me, when, how long have the current rates been in place, the numbers we're looking at now, for the number of rentals that happen? Have we had an entire fiscal year with the same rate for all of those rentals, or did it move midway through?
Mayor, Counselor, so the rate increase, I believe, went into effect fiscal year '22, which would have been July of 2021. So yes, this is the full year of data at the new rate, which by the way...
Okay.
Explains the increase in the revenues during that timeframe from the previous.
Great, thank you. I think that as we continue to look at all these different strategies, I think I said this once before on a different one, but I do think it's important that we do it incrementally, which is, I think, what they've been bringing to us, so that we don't have too many, we're not pulling too many levers at once, get too many variables in the mix, and then we can't really tell what's working, what's not working. So we're throwing, you know, better marketing tactics at it. So, you know, if we change too many things at once, it'll be hard for us to identify, is it the added spend in marketing that's, you know, improving our revenues, or is it the fact that we just raised rates? So I just encourage us to let Zulima's team continue to kind of roll these out, you know, step by step way, so that we can be more thoughtful and continue to be thoughtful about what is paying off and what things maybe aren't and need a change in strategy.
I like it. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Pollak is making a very good point that I wanted to build upon a little bit. I don't know if we mentioned it in this discussion or not, but from what Zulima and I talked about earlier, we have also raised the amount of classes that we're doing by more than double, and that is paying off extremely well right now. And so I think the more that we, you know, more strategically use the space that we have available, ramp up the amount of use that we have with each of those spaces, we're going to see some benefits. It offsets the need to rely solely on rate increases, which is the reason why we are very excited about bringing you hard proposals with each of these recreation enterprises. Because we think with some more strategy applied and some more creativity applied and so on, we can rely less on rate increases and more about using the space that we have strategically as it relates to the Rec Center, as well as a number of other ideas throughout our other recreational enterprises. So it's not to say that we won't need investment from all of you, as far as your support is concerned, like the concessions area that you were referencing earlier. Those kinds of things help us to repurpose space in hopefully a more profitable way.
Thank you. Mr. Bond?
Just point of information on your camps, like the spring, winter, and summer camps. Are those, do those require a lot of scholarship funding? Are those, do you know?
Mayor, Counselor, that's an excellent question. And again, I think I'm going to have to defer to my team to see, are we utilizing a lot of scholarships to pay for the summer camp program?
Mayor, Counselors, where some are scholarships, we get, like this past year, we have 35 DFS children.
Yeah.
And so we get funding from there. And so we're working on getting that back from the state. So there's just kind of a lot.
And that's just, that's only for summer camps?
Yeah.
Okay. Not for spring or winter?
Correct.
Okay. I just wonder about that, just because I know there's families that struggle with, you know, you have those breaks and it's a matter of choice, so kids being left home unattended and, you know, that kind of thing is a concern, whether it's summer or spring or winter breaks, you know, that's a concern.
I can say that we are working with DFS current, you know...
Yeah, that's great.
More so, I should say, this year, some changes have come. And so we're trying to implement those. And hopefully with that implementation, we'll be able to increase that offering out to more kids, to need somebody to watch them do.
Mr. Kathy?
And it may be robbing from Peter to pay Paul, but I noticed you said that the Sage room was used for city meetings and things like that. Now, if we were to set up an enterprise fund for this, then doesn't whichever department would use those, wouldn't they have to then budget for space rental, which would start to balance out a little bit of the, like I said, we're robbing from Peter to pay Paul, but it starts giving you a better picture of what's really happening at the Rec Center as well.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor, I would agree. That would be a strategy that we'd probably want to deploy. So in a true enterprise kind of model, I would agree.
Okay. Because as a follow-up...
Please.
But basically, if we weren't going there, then we would have to find either other city space or rent outside of facilities. So, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm letting this be it, I swear. But what kind of marketing plan do we have for this? Are we, during your 40, or during your anniversary time right now, are we really like incentivizing people to come and to do it? I know you sold like 40-some, which, how many people, packages for memberships and such? But, I mean, now it's just a prime opportunity in my mind to really push out those rentals and revamp that area. I know I'm stuck on the rental thing, but it's like the most easiest money-making, low-hanging fruit there, I feel like. So if you really advertised on that and you got people to, you know, just push it out there, and birthday parties, homeschools, you know, like everybody to use those rooms, I feel like people would start, you know, paying attention that that's a space that can be rented in an easy way. Because a lot of people don't realize that there's those rooms there. I mean, there's a big chunk. There are people like, "Oh, the Rec Center? Haven't been there forever," you know? So if there's some kind of like even flyers or marketing, like, "Hey, birthday party, think of us during birthday party, birthday showers," you know, things and such like that, is that... Do you guys already do that? Or can we do more?
So the plan is to do more. We do do that. And right now, the Rec Center staff is actually tasked with doing a lot of that advertising and marketing on their own. But thanks to the new communications team, we've gotten a lot of additional support. And so what has been successful is to partner with that team to develop a marketing strategy for those low-hanging fruit items, where we can get the biggest bang for the buck right now. And then establish our goals, we want to increase sales by 5%, and then figure out how to apply the marketing dollars in a way that is strategic so that we can achieve that goal.
Right.
And so, you know, determining which markets we want to boost ads in, determining, you know, where we want to market to, if we're taking it to nonprofits, if we're taking it to the schools, however we're doing that. And so we have been working with them to some degree, and will continue to do that. Because I personally believe that making community members aware of everything that we have to offer as, across my department, is going to be key to really driving business everywhere. We have fantastic amenities, we offer great services and programs, and we just have to make sure that the citizens know what we offer.
And just, yeah, like you say, partnerships, building collaborations, and getting people over there is good. Thanks. That's it.
My only comment is, I think Amber hit the nail on the head. I think the city staff is, you know, suited to do on the right track, because you did a fantastic job. And their plan is really good. And so Zulima, you really hit the nail on the head, too. You've done a nice job, and your staff as well. So you guys are right on the right track and very pragmatic approach to how we need to move forward with it incrementally, just like Amber said. So, job.
Well, if I may, time will tell. It's going to be very enter... I mean, that's 250-plus people came through the door, you sold 42 memberships. That's an above 15% big part.
52, sorry.
Oh, 52?
Yes.
Oh, that's a 20% conversion. Yeah, I mean, that's incredible. So, but time will tell. It makes, I guess, in my mind, I wonder, from those 52 repeats from last year, and they just happened to be there, so they bought them while they were there, or these 52 new, we'll see the totals at the end of the year and get to know. But what a penetration that is. That's just from that marketing, that's pretty amazing. So it proves that our marketing is doing well, and I would agree with Ray and Amber as well. I think we do this in steps so that we know what's working, what isn't. We throw all these darts at one time, one of them's going to hit the bull's eye, we don't know which dart hit it. So I like the approach that you're doing. And so if there was any direction, to me, it sounds like, at least for most of us, that you're on the right path, and you just need to kind of continue down that path until you figure out what works and what doesn't. And you're new into this also. You're just over a year, so I think you're still in that learning curve also. And so, but you've done an absolutely wonderful job, by the way, just with how much it's transformed between you and your staff, just in the last year since we've been here. It's been incredible to watch. So I guess I would say, keep up the good work. That's the direction that I would give you. So, anybody have anything else? Okay. Thank you, Zulima, very much. Mr. City Manager, we will move on to Athletics Fund and One Cent Seventeen Fund.
Yes, sir. Anytime that... Hey, thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Bye.
What's his name?
Phil.
Phil? You probably shouldn't talk so much next time.
I have some things to say, I just, you know...
Wait, I'll give you the floor if you want it.
I'm okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Anytime that we are in need of creating a fund, which, you know, is an instrument that we like to use, as you all know, we do need to come to the council and visit with you as far as putting that together is concerned. And in conjunction with that, we want you to hear what it is that we have in mind as far as it relates to the business proposal with each of these funds, so that indeed you can feel good about what we're proposing, or ask additional questions, and perhaps give additional direction that we may not have thought of as we put these thoughts together. Zulima kind of gave you a little bit of a preview with regard to what we're talking about and why we are coming to you, at least as it relates to the Athletics Fund. I would tell you that by doing this, if you choose to allow us to make that happen, I think it will help us to, you know, focus the magnifying glass a little more closely on the Rec Center and its enterprise by pulling these costs, as well as associated revenues, out of the Recreation Center paradigm and create its own, so that for athletics, we can understand that business proposal a lot better. And as Zulima mentioned, create a situation where that is not a subsidy-based area. And then maybe we can get better at what Recreation Center is doing. But nonetheless, before I get too far afoot, I'd like to defer the time to our CFO, who can walk through this with a little more detail with all of you, and entertaining questions, and like I said, potentially additional direction if you have it. Jill?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Counselors. Would you guys pull up in the folder for this meeting? I have a PDF. So I wanted to talk a little bit about why we need a fund. So we actually do track our expenses very well. We have organizations within each fund, and it helps us track those. Where we struggle a little bit... Where we struggle a little bit, especially in the General Fund, is we have all of our revenues going into one big bucket that funds everything within the General Fund. So, um, it's a little bit harder to pull out just specific pieces related to things like athletics and to really see, um, in a very transparent way whether it's doing well, whether it's not, where we need to focus on and that type of thing. So what we would like to do is, um, for the sports and athletics, we would like to, they currently reside in the General Fund, we would like to pull those out, create a separate fund. This way we can track not only our revenues and our expenses, but our balance sheet items as well. When I talk about balance sheet items, I talk about cash, receivables, and any kind of residual balance that we may have in that fund. So if it needs a subsidy, we would put more money in there. If it's making money, then it can keep that money in there for a time when it might need it in the future. So, um, we would like to do that, and in addition to, um, the Parks and Recreation Enterprise Funds, this is where you would see it. We would put it right here, and then as we look at our financial statements at the end of the year, they all roll up into Recreation Funds. So it wouldn't be separate for financial reporting, but it would be separate for tracking purposes. That's what we're trying to do, is just track that very well. The other one we want to look at is the One Cent Funding. As you all are well aware, um, we are getting ready to come into our One Cent Seventeen money. We should start receiving that in March. So we are looking to put a fund here under capital that will segregate those monies. It will do revenue and expense. Again, we track our expenses super well, we track our revenue for One Cent money very, very well, we have a separate line for that. But this, setting up a fund will actually let us do not only the revenue expense, but also the balance sheet items as well. So we'd be able to see how much cash do we have that's One Cent related, how much, um, residual fund balance do we have. So it really pulls that out and makes it very transparent on where we're at. And then again, with, um, with it going into the capital, where you would see that in our financial statements, it would all roll up together into just capital projects and it would be just consolidated into one category. So that's what we would like to do. We are coming into the 2024 budget, so I would like to do these prior to doing that so that we can start this fiscal 24 budget. Yes, sir.
Other question, um, a concern, I think, more or less. Are there parts of the REC Center or the Recreation Department that are profitable now? There are, aren't there?
Oh, yeah.
So my question is, if we separate this out, isn't that actually going to increase the subsidy on, on, like I say, the REC Center by taking out the profitable parts and allowing that money to remain there and build? Um, because if I heard you right, it, the profitable ones, we would leave that money in there in the event that they needed when something came up. So by that not, that profit money not offsetting the actual subsidy in the REC Center, that's going to increase, um, likely, because the profit part of it that keeps it bought down a little bit is going to be gone now and being shown on a balance sheet somewhere else. Is it so weird?
Actually, the athletics do not reside within the Recreation Center Fund. They reside in the General Fund. That's why we need to pull those out, because they are mixed in with taxes and other user fees and everything else in the General Fund. So that's why we were talking about pulling those out. We are not going to impact the Recreation Center Fund by removing that from the General Fund.
Okay, so we shouldn't see an increase in the subsidy provided to the REC Center by doing this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Actually, if I may add, um, as, as the demonstration that Zulima provided indicated, we're actually improving the Recreation Center subsidy if you focus on the Recreation Center specifically, because there were expenses associated in the REC Center Fund that now would be associated appropriately in the, uh, in the Athletics and Sports Fund that, if I remember correctly, had an impact of, of about two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the Recreation Center.
And that will require, require a subsidy for that fund?
Our hope is that by looking at the, uh, Sports and Athletics Fund more closely and segregating those costs out of the General Fund and the revenues out of the General Fund, we should be helping the General Fund actually, uh, improve its position. And, and I'm hoping in three years, that fund will actually be self-sufficient to where we can eventually see some profits there, um, given that it's entirely user-based. So, uh, from my standpoint, and what I'm hoping to see, is the General Fund improves its health a little bit and the athletics and, uh, sports pay for themselves, which is not happening in current.
Which subsequently buys out our subsidy on the REC Center as well.
Well, it'll at least improve the subsidy commitment that the General Fund overall has, which is a big win.
Okay, um, that's really all I had, was, um, we are planning to do these two funds, unless there's some, um, objection to, um, anything related to that, but we are hoping to get these in place for the next budget season.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to keep adding stuff here, but, but it would be my hope that with this framework that Jill is proposing here, that if, if we are fortunate enough to see a One Cent Eighteen, you're going to see a One Cent Eighteen box that's added to this downstream, uh, uh, diagram that, that Jill is creating here in, in, in terms of the fund structure. So One Cent Seventeen will be able to account for every expense and every piece of revenue. One Cent Eighteen will do something very similar so that any legacy money that you have from projects that weren't as expensive or whatever, you get to determine what happens to those dollars. I would add, however, that when it comes to surplus revenue, which is different than leftover revenue that One Cent Seventeen, you know, may be fortunate enough to experience, I would ask that those dollars be dedicated to the Opportunity Fund, because those are dollars that are truly unencumbered, undedicated, unrecognized by the resolution that was originally passed, and therefore gives council another opportunity as it relates to what infrastructure you'd like to see that invested in. Currently, the Opportunity Fund, uh, has six million, five million, somewhere in that neighborhood? We're anticipating a surplus revenue stream of about that amount from One Cent Sixteen that I think ought to be dedicated to the Opportunity Fund so that we can legitimately bring that question back to you and say, hey, we have these dollars, we didn't expect it, the resolution didn't commit it, what do we need to do?
But we do still need to spend that money according to, uh, what we lobbied for when we got One Six, One Cent Sixteen and One Cent Seventeen passed, correct? It's not just free money to use for whatever, it ha, it must be used for what that money was targeted for, even though this is surplus, correct?
Well, I, I, Mr. Mayor, I would contend that if it's truly surplus revenue, you have met every obligation that the original resolution laid out to the voting public. This would be money over and above what it is that you committed to, what your contract with the community was with that original resolution. Um, so for example, with the resolution you just passed with One Cent Seventeen, I'm suggesting that, it's a possibility anyway, that once you have spent that sixty-five million and you spent it exactly as the resolution laid out, you may have extra money that's over and above that, that contractual commitment. That's the money that I'm suggesting goes into the Opportunity Fund as a practice, uh, moving forward.
Understood.
Questions? Kyle?
Sorry, I'm not using team, but, uh...
Well, I'm not going to recognize you.
I just, uh, uh...
Kyle?
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Uh, I know, uh, as you were explaining that, Carter, I just, uh, um, think about what some of the people in the community might latch on to as far as like surplus revenue. In my mind, um, it is a surplus above and beyond what we budgeted for, but at least since my time on council, uh, the city and the council have been very conservative in their budgeting, and so it's not like this is, you know, uh, free money above and beyond, we're providing all of our services a hundred percent, taking care of all of our buildings a hundred percent. We budget very conservatively, and if there is surplus beyond that, that allows us to play catch-up on the decades of things that we need to catch up. So, um, I guess, I, I just felt the need to, uh, note that, that, um, the surplus is, uh, in part the result of very conservative budgeting. Is that fair to say?
And with all due respect, that's the exact line of thinking I was going on, and that, in my opinion, that money should still, because we didn't give, we're, we started out on roads at a fifty-nine, we invested twenty-one million dollars, we're still going to be at a fifty-nine, so if we have a surplus, it should go to the roads or to the water or to the stormwater, something that we ran on that money, that's where that money should go into there. And I'd love to have an extra six million dollars go into the Opportunity Fund where we could say, we could really use it here, we could really use it there, but I would much rather see us use it the way it was intended. Um, and maybe take that fifty-nine up to a sixty or a sixty-one or whatever it is. That's my opinion, but...
Amber?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Carter, when we pass the One Cent resolutions, do we not identify what, but any over, overages above what was projected, uh, will be, how, how we'll handle those?
Mr. Sir?
Uh, Counselor, thank you for that question. Let's just play this out for a little bit, a, a, as far as One Cent Seventeen goes, because we're, we're very familiar with One Cent Seventeen. If at the end of four years, and, and keep in mind, that's a critical timeframe, we're talking about four years from May of last year, when we actually projected what we thought we would get, right? Um, the council that's sitting in these chairs four years from now comes to the table and says, okay, we collected seventy million versus the sixty-five million. That council may have a very, very different view about streets. They may have a very different view about the water infrastructure. They may say, you know, we haven't built Station One yet, why don't we use that five million towards Station One? And, and while we recognize streets are underfunded significantly, four years from now, those people that are replacing all of you may say, we need to invest in Station One. They may say, it's important to continue to invest in streets like our predecessors hoped we could. The short answer to your question, Counselor, however, is you did not lay out any definitive direction that four years from now, your counselors are going to have to follow, because you don't have that capacity to commit your counselors four years from now to do one thing or another, based on money you weren't even sure you were going to get five years previously.
Mr. Gamra?
Thank you, uh, thanks, Carter, for that information. Amber, you might be recalling the specific purpose tax, there was a commitment to use overages from that towards the streets, and that's probably because the council that made that determination would be the same council that was seated...
Yep.
...when the revenues came in, so, um, that might be what you're thinking of.
Steve? Basically, though, even if we used it for Station One, we are still using it for a capital project, and fire and police were number two or number three, so I don't really see where there is a major issue over what Carter is talking about versus using it for what the city, the citizens told us to use it for.
My, where my train of thought was coming from, and Carter's absolutely correct, there, there is nothing we can do to, um, force a future counselor, or counselors to follow. Uh, we don't, we don't have that purview. Um, so he's absolutely correct there. My, my train of thought was, One Cent is, um, passes resoundingly every four years, by seventy percent or greater most of the time, but there's always that thirty percent that says, they're not spending it right, they're not doing this right, they're not doing that right, now they got a surplus and they're going to go do this with it. But the truth is, um, it's going to be used for something to benefit this community one way or the other, regardless of who's sitting in these seats. So really, my point is mute, so, didn't mean to take us down that rabbit hole. So, are there any more questions or comments? Forward to this?
It's not mute, it's moot.
Yeah, moot. Well, it should be mute also, trust me. Carter's given me the sign about four times today where he like, he's my, my angel on my shoulder. Jill, thank you for that, very much. Moving on to the Natrona County Recreation Joint Powers Board grant, sir?
Thank you, thank you. And so, um, Mr. Mayor, you feel comfortable that we've got the thumbs on number five?
There was, uh, there was information only, so there was no direction requested.
Okay.
So I didn't ask for thumbs?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
You think we're okay, though?
I, I believe, I believe we are. Informationally, everybody understand? Okay, yes, sir, I do think we are good. The only, the only direction I saw requested was for Zulima, and it sounded like the council was, uh, and I, I suppose I should have asked, to, to step back if we are okay with allowing her and her staff to, uh, continue down the path that they're on, uh, and is everybody okay with that? Okay, very good. So there's the direction that we needed, just, uh, an item late.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Um, so we, we want to take a moment of your time and, uh, to talk about the, um, Joint Powers Board grant, um, through the, uh, that is organized around the recreation mill that the school district oversees in partnership with a number of stakeholders. Um, we have been given the opportunity to, uh, receive a hundred thousand dollars potentially, um, pursuant to some, um, master planning as it relates to park facilities. We're hopeful that it extends beyond the limits of the city and includes a number of our other park providing partners in the county. Uh, and so with that, uh, and before we get too far ahead of ourselves and all of you, we wanted to be sure we were clear on what that's all about and what that program is and, and what it is that potentially we could be receiving. And so if I could turn the time over to Zulima to walk us through that?
Sure.
That would be great.
Mayor and Counselors, I will attempt to keep this one much more brief. So, as the City Manager mentioned, we do have the opportunity to receive a grant from the Natrona County Recreation Joint Powers Board in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, should the council approve the acceptance of that grant. Um, my intention for the grant, but I would certainly take direction from this council, if you feel like I'm not heading in the right direction, my intention for the grant would be to fund, uh, approximately half of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Certainly, we would focus on City of Casper amenities, but as the City Manager mentioned, I am really hopeful that we can reach out to the Natrona County School District, to, uh, the neighboring communities, Barnan, Evansville Mills, uh, and of course Natrona County, in order to partner, to really look at our park and recreation offerings in the entire region more holistically, so that when we look at improving amenities, building new amenities, replacing amenities, uh, we are considering the whole system rather than just our small spot in the world. Probably the best example I can give you as food for thought, uh, would be City Park. So City Park is between Center and, and Durbin, I believe, uh, in the vicinity of Seventh and Eighth Street. We have a playground there that is in really terrible condition and needs to be replaced. So my staff came to me and said, Zulima, we need to replace this playground, we got to put it on the capital list. And as I'm walking the site, I look across the street to Park School, and they have a beautiful playground structure that is built for kids the same age as the playground structure that we're looking at, at City Park. And so, the short-sighted, reactive part of our business says, we got to replace this playground structure. The more strategic, thoughtful approach would be to work with the school district and put something there that complements that playground structure rather than duplicates it. It means the school district will have better investment, it means the city will have better investment, and again, with other communities, um, in the area, maybe there's a great amenity that we would like to see, but it only makes sense to have one, where is the best place to put it, uh, within our entire area? Uh, and that's really kind of what I'm trying to get at. So, that's my proposal for you, and I would certainly entertain any questions or concerns or suggestions that you have related to that.
Uh, Steve?
Since this is going to be kind of a holistic looking at all of the parks and rec, um, would it be wise to try to get Visit Casper into there? it be wise to try to get Visit Casper into this, because they are, because you had mentioned them, and I hadn't noticed them in your memo, that they're, they're interested in bringing people in here, so they might be willing to kick in some money to help figure out what we need to do as well, to, to better sell outdoor recreation for the area?
Mayor and councilor, that's a great point, and I apologize, I thought it was included in the memo, Visit Casper as a partner, but certainly, because we are really trying to take advantage of an opportunity to develop Casper in our area as a sports and recreation hub for the state and the region, Visit Casper's involvement will be critical, and I think that.
I think we're there. I just overlooked it, sorry.
Mr. Bott?
So, Mayor, Zulima, I wholeheartedly support your, your direction here. I just, so this may be kind of naive, but when I think about, of planning, so this is just for the planning part, can you give me some examples of what, what kinds of expenditures are you looking at to spend this grant money? I mean, when I think of planning, I, I have some ideas, but I just want to make sure I'm on the right track.
Mayor and councilor, thank, thank you for that question. So, really, this would be funds that would be expended on a consultant?
Yeah.
That would come to our community, evaluate our inventory, look at any gaps in service that we have, look at areas where there's duplication, you know, see where there's overlap, work with all of the different stakeholders, identify trends in the industry that we may be behind in, and maybe others, and so, they would really do that legwork to bring together that holistic plan for us, and because it is so comprehensive, we do estimate it's going to cost about $200,000 to bring in that expertise. Certainly, they will likely have a local presence in one of our, you know, local consulting firms to help do some of the area legwork, but I'm really hoping to get an expert in parks and recreation that could come and help us develop a long-term strategic plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gamra?
Thank you, Bruce, and thanks, Zulima. I'm really excited to hear about that example of walking around and recognizing that there's a park immediately across the street, and that's exactly where I was trying to go with evaluating, you know, the cost of water that we spend on parks, just trying to think outside the box and not find ourselves in this rut of just, oh, this broke, so we need to replace it, like, that's an opportunity for us to reevaluate, is this, you know, does this make the most sense, is there a better use for this space, City Park? That playground that's there, that's in terrible condition, sits right in the middle of this enormous, like, there's a ton of space there that is not utilized, and so I've never felt that park was, you know, it's a weird fit, especially with the very nice playground across the street. You mentioned food for thought, I don't know what the context was, but my understanding is that Casper Community Greenhouse just built a greenhouse at Park, and so if we had already, if, if City Park was already a big edible garden and stuff, they might not have had to, I don't, I don't know if there was any funding from the school for that or anything, but if there was an edible garden across the street, they could just take their kids across the street and utilize it there. So, very excited to hear that we're thinking outside the box and coming up with new ideas for how to use this space. I'm totally in support of a master plan. I'm curious, in my experience on council, the, the folks that put together plans for us typically do a good job referring to past ones, and so, I would just want to make sure that this master plan is already building off of the information that we've gathered from the Casper Area Trails Path and Bikeway Plan from 2013, the Casper Parks and Open Space Improvement Plan, 2014, the Generation Casper Plan, so I do, I would, we've already done, I imagine we've gathered some of this knowledge, so I guess I would want to make sure that this plan is really addressing those knowledge gaps that we have. But overall, I'm definitely in support of it, and I'm glad you're thinking about other ways to use these parks. I think we're on the right track as far as that goes.
Jenna?
Okay, being that this park is in Ward One, and I utilize this, I was just about every day, walking around, and even when my son was growing up, it was well before Park School even put in that park, and it was their other one, but we would, we would utilize City Park, and, because they had the swings, and there's a lot of kids, because the bus, where this park is, now you have to think too, is the bus deep hub, is right there too. So kids who are waiting for their parents, they go over there, and they kind of hang out, but, so you got to take that into account, right? But, I used to walk across the street and let him play at Park School, once they built that new one, but then back again, and that park is used by multiple dog owners, right? We all walk around that park, there's tons of people that play fetch with their dogs there, but not only that, there's like four churches.
You allowed to play fetch there?
Yes, of course. On leash, of course. But, no, what I'm saying is that there's four churches that are right there, and all of them utilize that park for some form of something that they have going on in their community, in their church community, but not only that, the Elks Club is right there, and they use that every Easter for their big Easter egg hunt for the community, they use it for barbecues, I mean, it's just a well, and then Casper Chase, I mean, it's a well-used park, and so, yoga, they do all of that out there in the morning times too in the summer. So, I mean, yes, take everything into account, and I love where you're going with it, because, you know, it's a great neighborhood, so, I like it. But there's lots of food, lots of people that need to, old school apartments, all those people that live there have their dogs, that's their green space, you know, so there's just a lot of different ways that it could evolve, but it would be awesome.
Mayor and councilor, to that point, any study that we would engage in would include community engagement and stakeholder, you know, engagement, and so, the community would be surveyed, they'd have the opportunity to come to public meetings and give their input regarding any and all parks and all the rec spaces that we have, so that would definitely be a part of the project.
So, based on the conversation here, I, I'm assuming Zulima's on the right track, and we are behind her, and she's requesting directions, so can we give her a thumbs up to continue down this path? All right, very good, thank you.
Talk to Rotary.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah.
We are going to, we're going to change the agenda just a little bit again, and move up to legislative review, so that we can let staff go home while we finish up. So, Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. As we indicated at the beginning of the legislative season, there are a lot of changes and a lot of updates, we want to take the opportunity to provide to you tonight. Some of the bills and so forth that are coming and going and gaining some traction, have required the help of some of our key staff, a few of which we have here tonight, and wanted to make available, so that as we get into some of these discussions and we have questions, we want to be sure we could answer them, and that kind of thing. So, with that update, if I could defer to Jolene to kind of guide us through some of this, and, and bring the appropriate staff to bear, I would certainly appreciate that.
Mayor and councilors, it's quite a year in the legislature, and the one shout-out that I want to make to Casper is, in all the years that I've been with the city, I think we have a lot of momentum going with our councilors and our staff, of everything that we're doing with WAM to partner to really make some exciting things happen, and I'm really pleased of the staff that's here tonight, because we've been very, very involved with legislature and doing the right things to make things happen with them, with WAM. They give us some SOS calls or texts during the day, and there's not one person on our city staff or our council that doesn't jump in and get after it, and I think that's a really great showing for Casper. So, some of the bills that we're following, you saw today, I sent you an email on interim topics. On the 14th of February, we will be reviewing those and picking, and then approving of it in the council meeting that follows, of the interim topics that we will be taking forward and trying to get sponsorship on. So, 7th, if you can, if you can turn your interim topics into me by the 7th, so we can turn those around for the 14th work session. Upon adjournment tonight for the House Appropriations Committee, I don't know what happened, Jill, did you see anything? The 13.25 million in extra direct distribution, that would be in the formula of the Madden and Bebaut formula, was debated, and don't know what happened, but it came out of appropriations at the Senate to add 13.25 million to direct distribution to cities, and with a little bit coming in this fiscal year and the majority coming in next fiscal year. That was, you'll recall, that was cut down, the governor suggested 26.25 million, and the Senate Appropriations Committee cut it down to 13.125. The abandoned buildings was introduced or referred to corporations, Liz was, there she is over there, Liz and Wallace can probably give, or Liz, who's reporting, Liz is reporting on where we're going with abandoned buildings. Well, she will be if we have questions, I guess, thank you. Here we go, sorry about that. We had three, we had three liquor license bills. The Senate File 003, which came from Casper, from one of our bar and grill owners, and retail liquor license owners, we took forward WAM, supported it, went forward as a bill, it died on the third reading in the Senate, and that's where we could have chosen to charge a fair market value to sell the, the bar and grill and retail liquor licenses, I think, no, I defer to FLUR on those, but we also have the tavern liquor license and the bar and grill liquor license, and those two have been combined, and FLUR will report on those for any questions you have on that. Annexation, Wallace and Liz are here to talk about that one. It was received for introduction into the Senate today, and that has a lot of steam behind it, and it could have a lot of ramifications for the City of Casper, where we go. Public Safety Communications Trust Fund, also known as YO-Link, Scott Hoffman from our police department, and Lori Jackson have been doing a lot of work on that, he can talk about that, and we want to talk a little bit of where we are. The companion bill that was a, let's see, the trust fund was a House, but the Senate file failed, and that was the $8 million appropriation to YDOT to fund YO-Link. That failed, so YDOT's going to have to find it in its current funding, or it's going to go out to cities and towns and counties and start billing us for use of YO-Link, and Scott will talk about that for anything, for any questions you have on that. Pharmacy benefit enhancements were filed, it's been referred to the Judiciary Committee, Eric Nelson can answer questions on that. We had a procurement bill that Evansville, their police chief filed with Senator Boner, Senator Landon, I'm trying to remember the third, they passed it on to Casper, I mentioned it a few weeks ago, we got an SOS on Friday, was it? We had an SOS on Friday, and had 30 minutes to put something together, to send down, because they wanted to file the bill. Wallace and I, Wallace worked on it, dictated to me, we got it into them, they came asking, the bill came and said, anything 135,000 or less, we don't want to have to go out for bid anymore, because we're having a real difficult time in procurement, and Wallace will explain a little of that. He upped the amount to 250 in the bill, we did an explanation of why, I'm proud to say that they kept it at 250, we don't know if it'll stay there, but it's been referred to corporations. And then HB 216 is a residential rental properties bill that FLUR has information on and can report on. So, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, where do you want to go from here?
I prefer that you start back at the top, and we take one at a time, which is probably what we should have done anyway, just have each person relative to those speak on them if it's necessary. Otherwise, we're going to be going all over the place.
So, is it, and if, I mean, if we're going to have them report on each one of them, we're going to be here all night?
No, no, I'm just saying if there are any questions.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on, we're on the same page, just saying if people have questions, then we would be able to answer that.
Right, so what I was hoping you would do is just read down the list, if there's any questions, we'll stop at each one, and otherwise, we can boogie right on through.
Direct distribution. Abandoned buildings.
Sorry? I do? I did? Oh, do you have something on direct?
You're not, you're not, not to mind yet on the list.
Okay, okay. Well, then, hold your hand, sister.
Do you have a question, question on the abandoned building one, is, are we on that one?
We're on direct distribution.
Okay, no, the direct distribution, abandoned buildings.
Okay, so my, my question is, it says it's a tax credit, I'm assuming that's a property tax, it's a property tax credit, is that Mr. Mayor correct?
Yes, Your Honor, yes, this relates to a property tax credit, which would be administered by the county, not by us, or not by the city. And we, as staff, did read through this. We currently have our dangerous buildings ordinance that you all have approved and gotten an update from Mr. Elston. If we see dangerous buildings in the city, from a building code standpoint, we move forward with that. And in this case, you would be getting private citizen input that would come forward to the county, to the city council members, you all would be making the determination if a property is a nuisance. There is not currently a definition of what a nuisance property is in this bill. That is of concern to staff, because what may be a nuisance to one person may not be else. So we have really relied heavily on code issues, and I think we've handled that well over the, probably about the last three years, but we have researched it, we don't see really anything wrong with this, but I think to the city, we have our own procedures right now, that if we have issues, we'll put a lien on a property if we have to demo it, that again is attached to the deed, and we keep up on that, both with code enforcement as well as our building division. So, nothing super of issue with this, but there's a few definitions that staff feel is missing from this bill.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Jolene?
The three liquor license bills, the, the one that failed, fair market value, the tavern liquor license, and bar and grill liquor license that have been combined.
Okay, moving on.
Annexation.
Moving on. I didn't see a hat, sorry, I'm looking, I'm sitting here staring at my screen. We got to get used to using it, so. Mr. Kathy?
Thank you, sir. I just want us to get used to using it, that's all.
What's the whole impetus behind this annexation bill?
Counselor and Mr. Mayor, the impetus behind it is probably the City of Cheyenne. They are looking at annexing about 125 to 150 properties that their territory surrounds, that are sort of donut holes, all surrounded by the city, and that has some people who don't want to be annexed, a little bit fired up about it, and trying to put more procedural safeguards in place to make the city do more things than they currently do to annex, and what we have to do currently is extensive. So, it's trying to almost create a bill that makes it impossible to forcibly annex.
As a follow-up, then, now, we have our outside utility agreements.
We do.
Water and sewer. And those agreements say that we can annex anytime, and they have to succumb to that. Will this supersede that, or void those annexations?
I wouldn't make the legal call right now, Counselor, but it could potentially do that, because what happens right now is if somebody doesn't want to be annexed after the public hearing and after all the information and education has been presented, then property owners after the public hearing, even if it passes, if 50% or more don't like it, they can object to it and kill it for two years. What the new bill does is it creates a precondition on the city that says, before you even have any of the information, you go to all of the property owners surrounding, and they've increased actually even the distance of people you have to notify, and you need to get their approval before you even proceed, or it's dead before you even start. So, that's what the Wyoming Legislature is looking at. But yes, it could affect those agreements, because instead of what we have in there is, they have no right to protest after the public hearing, they have to annex, but if it's a precondition, they can avoid the protest altogether, relying on the precondition, and essentially.
Void.
Void our outside water agreement provision.
Thanks, I mean, that gives me concern if it would supersede the way we're handling it. For further context, I think it was mentioned, this is coming out of Cheyenne, because they do have pockets within the city that aren't technically in the city, but the expectation is that the city's providing public services, because they're like right in the middle of town and stuff, and so, I think from their point of view, it's just very messy as far as, you know, where they're sending first responders, who's footing the bill, utilities, I imagine. Utilities, I imagine that adds some implications. And so I totally get that Cheyenne has some issues, and this may, in their minds, address those. But I do think we need to be careful about what it would. I don't think we have that problem here. And so I don't want, you know, a state statute to start creating issues for us when it doesn't sound like there are any.
We do actually have pockets here within the city where there are county properties right in the middle of our city. I have firsthand knowledge because that one house that I was going to rent on the river after I sold my house is actually in the county, but it's surrounded by city. And there's three property owners there, I think, and two of them don't want to be annexed. And so I believe we've never moved forward with annexing them. But we do have some of those issues here, anyway. Any other questions for annexation? Okay, thank you, Wallace. Julie?
YO-Link trust fund.
I guess, if I may, I do have a question because it sounds like if they don't appropriate the $8 million to the state, it sounds like the state's going to turn around and put that back on us, and we're going to have to start paying for usage. Is that what I'm understanding correctly? And if so, where does that money come from?
Members of council, right now, they send us a fake bill every month. That totals about $300,000 a year for the entire county. So PSCC as a whole, so that's Evansville, Mills, us, County, combined, it would be about $300,000 if we were to get built. Right now, they take that money out of the roads for the entire state. And then there's a royalty fee that comes directly from the agencies that we don't never see that goes directly to that. That totals about $4.6 million. So we do pay into it already, but we're, we don't see anything right now. We're being told that that's still not going to happen. But without, they've already killed the Senate bill that failed on the third reading. That have been kind of tied us over for the biennium for right now. But they killed that on the third reading. It was a 15 to 16 vote. House bill has not been, did it go to appropriations yet?
Yes, it's been introduced and referred to appropriations, but it's not on the calendar for committee, on the date, to be voting or talking about it.
So we're still waiting on that for the trust fund. And what that would do is that would be money that would be put into an account to fund this, the YO-Link system for the future.
Julie?
Pharmacy benefit enhancements. Procurement bill. Residential rental properties.
Yes, I do need some.
Lisa?
Yeah, I do have some questions on that one. So could I get a little bit more information on what that?
Your Honors, members of council. House Bill 216 is basically the city of Wyoming preempting their ability to control or regulate all residential rental property for the owners and renters. So it takes it away from cities, so they can no longer, we can no longer regulate that.
Can I do a follow-up? So this is the city, do we regulate that now?
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, the finer focus that that is aimed at is particularly with respect to utilities. The current practice that we have is if we get a renter that leaves a property and there's no, well, there's outstanding balance to the city with respect to the utilities that they purchased and used and haven't paid their bills on, we have the ability to go to the landowner and say, hey, your building has an outstanding balance, and we would like to recoup that. The state is taking issue with that, as they have in previous years with previous versions of the same idea, so that indeed we can no longer have that ability to turn to the landowner or the building owner and try to recoup those funds, but rather have to chase the renter around who can, as you know, be fairly nomadic from time to time to try to get those monies back. And so that's at least one element that's behind this bill. And as I mentioned, we have a number of these that have occurred in the past drafts that have come forward and not have had success. I'm hopeful that that'll be the case with this bill as well.
Just as a commentary, I know that the smaller communities, Douglas, Glen Rock, Mills, all of them, other than Casper, go after the landowner.
Amber, did you have something? Or it was up, then it was down, so I?
Carter answered my question, I think.
Okay, very good. Sorry. Julie?
That's the end of the list. Any other questions here?
Do we have any other questions concerning legislative review? No? Okay, then we will move on to agenda review. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, everybody, for your help there.
Amen. Yeah, thank you all.
I appreciate that. Again, for this portion of our work session, we typically go over this document, the grid document. And the purpose, of course, is to look ahead a little bit and see what meetings we have on our horizon and follow-up items that potentially you have interest in. To direct your attention on a couple matters, you'll notice next week, on the 7th, during the pre-meeting portion.
Two weeks.
I'm sorry, two weeks. That's exactly right. We have a couple items that we wanted to follow up with you on. Vice Mayor Pacheco proposed that council entertain some time with game and fish to talk about their strategies as it relates to the turkey population in our residential areas. And so that individual will be here in pre-meeting on the 7th, as well as council will have the opportunity to meet the new general manager for the Ford Wyoming Center. Before I get too far afoot, however, I want to be sure that you are all aware that on the 31st, we will have a strategic planning session that starts at 4:00, wherein we'll get you all in a room up at the Ford Wyoming Center and pick your brains as it relates to goals you want to see happen, strategic directions you want us to take. We will be having food, so fuel will be provided as well.
We will also have a facilitator there.
Yes, correct.
Is there a Zoom option?
Yes, that is the case, yes. So be prepared for that. We anticipate that that'll be probably 4:00 to 8:00 that evening.
If you are going to need Zoom, please reach out to FLUR so that she can set that up for you.
Nope, no problem, no problem. Looking ahead again, that work session of the 14th, Julie mentioned one of the items that will be coming forward in the form of the interim office. Julie also talked about the Gulf Enterprise being discussed with the council. That'll be on the 14th, and that should wrap up the subsidy discussions. And then, of course, after that, we're hoping we can hit you up with actual implementation strategies after that. We will have the Health Department here to update us on their activities. The Aquatic Center roof project is one that One Cent 17 anticipated. We have a strategy we need to go over with you in order to get that project done sooner than later. We will also have a real pivotal conversation with respect to your license holders in the liquor world. That is the first step of many that you take to renew those licenses every year. And so we like to get ahead of that a little bit with a report, and this would be that opportunity.
Is it possible to get a copy of that earlier than the packet? Because we normally get the packet on Friday. This comes up on Tuesday. Is there any way we could get that earlier in the week?
For which one, Steve?
The liquor license.
Is that possible, sir?
Let me defer to the chief and FLUR on that question. What do you think?
Mayor, Council, we're currently offering that report right now. I'm not sure what the status is. We've been working on it for a couple weeks now. So I believe that I can say that if it's finished in time to get it to you early, I'm more than willing to do that.
Just that why it's set up for the 14th. February?
Yes. Yeah, there's a chance that we'll be able to get it early. Preliminary information does not indicate that there's going to be anything of shock and high value to council. So I think it's going to be a fairly benign annual report.
Then I'm not as worried about it. Sometimes they have not been benign.
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
As far as other items are concerned throughout the grid, I always like to kind of turn your attention to the very back page. That is the page wherein we try to queue up a number of items on the near horizon. This is kind of the catch-all page where items have come up, and we haven't gotten to dock it them yet. And so if you don't see items either in the body of the grid or on this back page that you're concerned about, I would certainly invite that feedback and input and direction so that we can get that on our radar, as it were. So keep an eye on this document for those kinds of matters because we don't want to let things fall through the crack.
Also, just FYI, on the 21st, during the pre-meeting, we're going to have a Rocky Mountain Power update. Just so you know, it looks as though after Carter and I had a meeting with Black Hills Energy, and it looks like they may come on the 7th to address some concerns the public may have. So we might get back-to-back energy meetings, anyway. So. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's proceed with council around the table. Mr. Bond, do you have anything?
Just say, I attended the Nicholas and Museum receptions on Friday and Saturday night. They were both well-attended. I mean, I haven't seen receptions that well-attended in a long time. Both were, the one Friday night was a reception for the Artist Collective and the Casper Artist Association, as well as an artist who's been in Casper and taught classes. She resides in Mexico currently, but all three of those exhibits are amazing. And then the Native American Indigenous exhibit, it was opened on Saturday, is equally is amazing. That's an international show, so it'll be here until March. So if you get the opportunity to go see that, please do. It ends up, I think, in Europe and the Middle East, I think, so. And there's a very nice catalog of all the work that's in there, so. Thank you for your support of the Nicholas.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kathy?
Had a finance committee meeting earlier today, and the audit was presented to us. I think those of you that were not here received a copy of it tonight. Everything looked good. If Brandy would like to go ahead and add anything more to it.
This is why I don't say bye.
I'm quite good at passing the buck on these things.
No, it was super interesting. It looks like the city is doing really well. Strong work, Jill. It looks like minimal complaints and a couple of things that they thought we could improve upon or were already instituting. So very informative. Good read, guys. And since you passed the buck, I'm going to go to my next thing. I did my Neptuna County Public Health Department, and I promised to shout out, the Papathon is this weekend, the 28th, 10:00 a.m. So if you need your pap Saturday, 10 to 2:00. They are now doing CPR classes for the public. You can schedule those. They just started a breastfeeding support group Tuesdays at 10:30 in the morning, and they are preparing in February to do breastfeeding preparedness classes. If you guys want to know about your business, let me know. That's what I've got for now.
Amber?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a couple of meetings to report back to you all on last week. Attended a Metro Task Force meeting. The second one we've done in this task force, we've got several folks from the city represented. Additionally, Bear of Mills is there, representatives from Barnan. The county is involved. We've got a veterinarian, members of PD are there. So it's really, I'm really enthusiastic about the formation of this task force and our opportunity to get to work tackling some of the questions that we have around the future of what that facility looks like in our community and how it, you know, can continue to serve our citizens into the future. So it's a great, great group of people, lots of minds around the table to make sure that whatever we come up with, recommendations we're able to bring will be the right direction for the community at large. So I'll keep you all posted there. First thing that we're working on is to be looking at some ordinances to make a more cohesive set of ordinances across municipalities, so trying to build some consistency there within our ordinances. So I'm looking forward to doing that work. And then LGBTQ Advisory Committee meeting on Friday. They are ready to come provide a report to councils. So I know that's on the grid towards the back. If we can get that somewhere into the official schedule, they'd like to come let you know what's been happening and what the kind of, you know, next things are now that indiscrimination ordinance passed, which was a significant initial focus of that group. So yeah, anytime that we can get that scheduled, I let them know that I would ask that you support them coming to come talk to you. And lastly, I'm here in Cheyenne. I'll be here for WHAM, which starts tomorrow. Already had a chance, I've been at the Capitol today and a little bit yesterday. I was doing a citizens lobbyist training yesterday with the Equality State Policy Center. So been down here for a couple days. I've got the opportunity to work with Wyoming Association of Municipalities on behalf of the city for the next three days, attend some workshops, and also speak with our legislative delegation down here for a number of the bills that we just talked about legislative updates. So looking forward to doing that. And then I'll actually be staying for the Governor's Tourism and Hospitality Conference as well, where we'll do the same thing, but rather than advocating for, the city will be advocating for the tourism industry across Wyoming. So action-packed time down in Cheyenne. So I'm glad to be here and be able to advocate on behalf of our citizens and what our interests are. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Thank you for being there. Lisa?
I was also at the Finance Committee meeting. I'm not going to duplicate what everybody else has already said. But great work to Jill and to Nicholas. And then went, then jumped right over to visit Casper right after that one, and then lots of positive things that they're doing this year. And so we were rewarded a bid to host another tourism conference in 2024 for Northwest U.S. Spotlight Conference. And then also IRU will be coming to Casper as another trade show for 2024. And so they're going to allow Casper to show off plans, operators, and agents to the city, and then hopefully bring in some other different events that we haven't hosted before. And then I'm heading to legislative meetings tomorrow.
Sweet. Thank you. Jenna?
All right. So I got to attend my first Yellowstone District meeting. So that was yesterday, and that was nice. I got to meet the rest of the board that was there, and it's kind of fun for me just because it's coming full circle. When I first moved here and got involved in the community and stuff, it was in, I don't know, 2012 or '13, somewhere in that ballpark. And so I had worked, and that was when I first met Liz and worked as a volunteer redoing the planners and everything that were down there. So now being part of the committee and hanging out, it's kind of full circle. So it's fun. So enjoying that and being back with the group because I know a lot of them and their neighbors, and it's just, it's fun. So it was a nice social. Thank you.
Very nice. Mr. Kyle?
Thanks, Bruce. Had a Casper Housing Authority Board meeting last Thursday. Liberty Square is getting close. I think they're expecting the first building to be done in March and the second one in June. The Willard Project, everyone should know, they picked up the old The Willard Project, everyone should know they picked up the old Willard Elementary School. Still, it's held up a little bit, I guess. You know, WCDA, this is the first year they've had their community development block grant funding, and I think it's just a little slow to get distributed, and so just kind of being held up a little bit in that regard, but still really looking forward to seeing that project get underway. Kim and her team presented our most recent homelessness task force meeting, which was last Wednesday, right after our Metro Animal Task Force meeting, and they presented about the continuum of care. If you're not familiar, if you've not worked in healthcare, that's essentially the mechanism which draws and distributes federal money to tackle multiple issues. I think homelessness is definitely a focus of that, though, and Wyoming as a state has historically received very little in the way of federal funding. And so we're just having conversations about the potential to change that and how we can maybe, you know, how the city can be the best partner as possible to really build up that continuum of care, to pull in more federal funding. Wyoming gets about $67 per homeless individual, whereas states like Delaware, similar homeless population, they're getting 6,700 an individual. So as far as us being successful in drawing in federal funding to tackle this issue, I would say we've been very unsuccessful up to this point. So really looking forward to seeing what we can do in the way of pulling in more resources to take care of that problem. Casper Youth Council meeting this last Sunday, we spoke about the difficulties getting their survey distributed in the school district, and so it sounds like we did get some permission to hang up flyers and stuff, so maybe QR codes redirect the kids to take these surveys, but I really hope that the Central Services Board reconsideres that decision. Really need more information on this demographic, especially considering, I believe several years ago, the state legislature pulled Wyoming out of the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System surveys, and that was surveys that we used to give high school students to get an idea of their behaviors towards sex, drugs, rock and roll, you know, all the good stuff. Really disappointed to see our state pull out of that, because we need that information about our kids, especially this Casper Youth Council one really touches on why youth might leave our state, and it would give us some really good valuable information, so I'm hoping we can get that disseminated a little bit more broadly across the school district. Jenna sent me out our old Yellowstone District Advisory Meeting yesterday. It was hosted at the Drink Re, so that was my first time being in there since Cor Paulos took over from Urban Bottle. I'd recommend you stop and check it out. We spoke about projects in the near future affecting that area, such as the First Street Gateway Project over there by the First Street Bridge, and also Midwest Construction. We also reviewed all the Christmas activities that group does. For folks that aren't aware, I wasn't aware before I joined the meeting, but those guys do a ton, especially around the Christmas season. They were out Rudolphing, is what they called it, so giving away gift cards to random pass provides downtown. They went caroling from business to business. They, members of that board took hours out of Tuesday afternoon to hang lights around the poles downtown, and so that group is very active, they're very engaged. They do a lot of stuff downtown. They're kind of one of those unseen forces. They don't get a lot of, you know, recognition for the work they're doing, so I wanted to take the opportunity to give them a shout out now. Those guys are awesome. And then, yeah, I'll be joining a contingency of us to go to WHAM. I always really look forward to that and hearing what other folks are doing around the state, and so I imagine we'll have lots to talk about.
Tell them your new position.
Oh, and apparently I'm the chair of the OID Advisory Board now. Got cornered into that one a little bit, but yeah, so. Yeah, I imagine we'll have lots to process next week after your winter convention. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Was that the LGBTQ Advisory Committee on Friday with Amber? And again, I just want to reiterate, I'd love to get them on the docket as soon as we can for the report. Would be fantastic. I think that's all I've really got. We've got Nitroona County Council of Governments breakfast this week. Yeah, so we'll be doing that at 7:00 o'clock in the morning. Fantastic time. So that's about all I've got.
Thank you.
I will be at that breakfast. I just, I'm not a morning guy, so having to be there at 7:00 a.m., just with all the mayors and the Nitroona County Commission, and so it's very informative, kind of know whatever, what's going on with everybody. But I have quite a few things. Concerning the financial audit that we heard in the Finance Committee this morning that everybody's talked about, I am beyond proud of Jill and Nicholas and the job that our CFO and our Finance Committee does for the city of Casper. The amount of money that you've been able to save the city and the Regional Joint Powers Board, and just the entire way you've revamped that, you deserve so much credit, you don't get enough. So I'm really proud of you and your department. I wanted to make sure you knew that. Please, boys and girls, dinner on the 4th, I need a head count by Friday. So if I haven't heard from you by Friday, do not expect there will be a ticket for you.
He's going to scalp them.
I am going to scalp them. No, actually, we've got some folks on council who have spouses, and they would like to take them, and so if there's an extra ticket available and nobody's going, I'm going to give it to them for their spouse. So by Friday, if I haven't heard from you, those will be gone. Met with Wyoming Recovery Center, and they have quite a program, and we had talked about the opioid settlement money and doing a joint venture with the county, which I believe you and I will be meeting with the Chair of the Commission next week concerning that. And it looks like we may be able, in a situation where we can put an RFQ to the recovery centers in town, we're not going to have the money to not only build but maintain a detox center, but we do have centers in town that are already doing that, that would be more than willing to work with us financially to help our community and the people in our community get the help that they need. And they've had almost an 85% success rate with opioids. And meth, if they can get them in for five-plus days, their success rate is through the roof as well, through medicine and counseling services that they offer. So we may have a really nice partnership getting ready to form there, some good use for that money that we've been awarded, and be able to help not only some of the folks in town, but our social services and everything else that it's putting a strain on. So hopefully some good things on the horizon there. Had a forum Saturday night with Liberty's Place for You. I was a little nervous going in. They can, well, anyway, it went amazingly well. It was very well received, they were very kind. I was shocked at how nicely that went and how well the debate went between Mr. Sabroski and myself. I think it was received really well. So I was kind of proud of that. I already touched on Black Hills Energy, so hopefully they're going to send a representative to our council meeting on February 7th during public comment. They'll have five minutes to kind of let the public know where they're at and what's going on with their bills. I didn't feel like it was our place to do that for them. The meeting of the hands, I'm kind of curious what everybody thought. For me, this is awesome. I love it. I will not institute it during these work sessions, because we're right here together, so it's not necessary, but we will be utilizing this on the floor. It's awesome for me, actually, to not have to be looking around or for you to have to wait to catch my eye. I just, I really like this. My question for you four would be, I noticed you were erasing them as I pulled them up. Is that something you'll be able to do consistently? Great, then this will be awesome. So once we're done, we can just hit the stop button and we're out, right? And then at every work, or at every city council session, you'll have this set up to where we just hit the join and we're in? Okay, excellent. So if anybody has any questions with that, I guess on February 7th, we could just flip Flor and IT with lots of questions. I am extremely proud of this council and our representation at WHAM. We have six people going. With that in mind, keep in mind the quorum issues that may arise, and they'll talk any business when there's four or more of you together. But I think that's, it just bodes well for this council and says a lot about who we are that we're involved, not just with the city of Casper, but beyond, to bring great things to Casper, and I take a lot of pride in that. I think it's awesome. Lastly, it was a pleasure to swear you in, Mr. Nelson, and welcome aboard. I know every single one of us are excited to have you, and we look forward to great things with you. Other than that, we'll see you next Tuesday, 4:00 p.m. at the Ford Wyoming Center. If you don't know where we're meeting, you'll go around the back and then go up the stairs. I'm sure we'll be up in there somewhere, but plan on four or five hours anyway. So we'll have a facilitator there, and that's all I got. Thank you all very much, and we'll see you next Tuesday at 4:00.
Thank you.
Those of you who are traveling down, can I hold you for just a second?
What?
All right? Traveling down to Cheyenne.
Oh, no, but we're going to send. Good. Yeah, I know with the recovery, because they race out.
Kindred of health, that when we start discussing opioid money.
No problem here, no problem. Because they're getting funded too, yeah.
Yeah. We have a meeting.